Welcome one, welcome all to our informal session. Vice Mayor Wilson is away on travel, but we're willing to start. We do have an adjustment in order of the city council briefings. And we will start with the micro transit pilot program update. And thank you for coming.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, to clarify, Captain Janati is on his way. We'll reach, we'll let you know when he gets in. This first presentation will be from Hampton Roads Transit. Then council had a couple of conversations previously about pilot program that went on in the former Bayside District. This will give council an update on that and also to talk about next steps.
As Chair for the Hampton Roads Transit, when you all mentioned about the 3D versus the micro transit and you hadn't seen a report, an update, I immediately talked to the CEO, Mr. William Harrell, he waved his hand. And so this is part of letting you know how well it went. This is not an ask. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and Mr. Manager. My name is Hank Morrison. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Administrator. So today we've got representatives from HRT. We've got Mr. William Harrell, Mr. Ray Amaruso, and Ms. Amy Brazil. They're going to talk about HRT in general and also give you a rundown of the micro transit pilot project that occurred last year. So I'll let Mr. Harrell.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. And as Dr. Ross Hammond has indicated, this is an informational briefing. There is no ask. We're just happy to update you on recent efforts that we've undertaken to improve public transit as well as to address a micro transit pilot. And we believe very strongly that micro transit certainly fits well within certain areas of the region. And we think that that's going to be an added tool in the toolbox to be able to provide public transportation that makes sense for specific communities. If we could just get started, we just wanted to mention briefly that we are improving service hours and frequency. As part of the 2020 General Assembly Session with the support of the region, we were able to get some dedicated funding. And I can put my old city manager hat on and recognizing the municipal demands that our communities have, the additional state funding really provides the kind of funding that can improve frequency so that we can begin to move from a transit-dependent environment to also attracting choice riders. That's individuals like you and I that have the ability to take transit if it makes sense for us. And that's really important. So we are improving the frequency and we're pleased that we will be initiating 15-minute service along Route 20 beginning in October. So that is a much-needed service. We know the hoteliers at the oceanfront are very interested in that service, so we're anxious to implement that in October. New buses, you've seen obviously some of the new buses around, which have been funded by that additional funding. And certainly we have additional buses coming later this summer. We are expanding, and this is something I feel very passionate about, we're upgrading passenger amenities. Nothing's worse than seeing a transit customer sitting on a grocery cart. And unfortunately, because of the lack of shelters and us not having a budget, a pre-established budget for that, that has been a challenge historically for Hampton Roads Transit and before that TRT as well. So we're very pleased that we've been able to significantly increase that number. We are working with your staff and certainly eight shelters have been installed and 37 stops have been retrofitted with solar lighting in the city of Virginia Beach. That way, if you're waiting for a bus at night, you feel much safer with some lighting. And the next element is deploying next-generation technologies, the real-time bus. We're also working on mobile fare collection. That way, you won't have to have cash, which oftentimes can slow down the bus ride. We're upgrading our facilities as well. And as you know, we're working with your staff on a new investment, a significant investment, which will really replace the 39-year-old Parks Avenue facility. And the new facility that we're working with your staff on will really help us begin to transition to electric vehicles as funding becomes available. We are investing in our workforce, as you know. In order for us to be able to implement the service, we are having to really work hard to get new drivers in, new mechanics. We've increased our wages, our starting wages to $20 an hour, and we are beginning to see an increase in hiring. But that's an ongoing challenge that not only are we having, but across many other industries as well, as you well know. Exploring new partnerships and innovative services. And I won't steal the thunder of my staff that's going to talk about the pilots that we had, one in Newport News and one in Virginia Beach. And we saw a significant increase in interest in that Virginia Beach zone as we improved marketing. Finally, expanding outreach and ridership promotions. We're working to get people excited about using public transit, making sure for Election Day and what have you, there's free service. So we recognize we got to attract new riders to public transit. So in conclusion of my portion, we're really looking for three things: better reliability, faster commutes, and new connections that are consistent with your growth plans. The next point I want to make, which is one I must underscore, because as I meet with business leaders, one of the key points I like to emphasize, transit is not a social service. 60% of HRT customers are using transit to go to work. So we are an essential part of the economic fabric of Hampton Roads. This includes major employment destinations such as Newport News Shipbuilding, Naval Station Norfolk, Centerra, you name it. And as we improve the system, there will be 127% increase in the number of jobs that will be near and improve public transit offerings. So one thing we all need to recognize, while we may never ride Hampton Roads Transit, chances are you rely on someone who does. So we all benefit from public transit. So at this time, I'd like Ray Amaruso, our Chief of Planning and Development, to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell, and good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and members of council. It's so nice to be back in front of city council in your beautiful new building because it's been a long time since HRT's had the opportunity to come out. So we're really excited to talk about the micro transit pilot project. A little background for you all, some members of council are so new that they may not know that a couple of years ago, before the pandemic, we were the recipient of a state demonstration grant award from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation to the tune of almost $1.6 million. And of the two cities that we were going to do the pilot program in, each city committed to providing a 20% local match. The demonstration grant goals, as far as the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation was concerned, was first and foremost, does demand responsive service, which is what micro transit is? It's a call system or reservation system that you do via cloud-based technology? Improve mobility options for people in a cost-effective manner that is at least as cost-competitive as fixed guideway service, or perhaps even better? Is there a role for that mode of demand-responsive service of micro transit in the HRT service area? We have a very large service area. We have, as you well know, six cities that we serve, 1.4 million people in the six cities. We run 70 routes, fixed routes. We run light rail and ferry, express bus service in the MAX and on the Peninsula, Peninsula Commuter Service. This is a different type of mode. It's not based upon a schedule that we run hourly service, a half-hourly service, but rather it's demand-responsive service. And then the final exploration question or goal was, can, from the state's perspective, translate what they learned through our pilot project to benefit other transit properties in the areas around the Commonwealth? So basically, the objective of the pilot project was to utilize a cloud-based or an app-based booking for ride reservations to move people around in two predefined zones, one in the city of Virginia Beach, that you call the Bayside Area, primarily centered along the spine of Independence Boulevard, with the other in the city of Chesapeake, in a residential area that had no fixed route, I'm sorry, in the city of Newport News, we were in Chesapeake last week, that had no fixed route service because of the layout of the street system doesn't allow for fixed route service. The pilot was operated as a turnkey project. What that means is we went after a request for proposal and got all services, the technology service, the leasing of vehicles and the driving of the vehicles, customer service center through the award of a contract, since HRT at this five minutes in time isn't structured to deliver that type of service. We don't have those vehicles in our fleet. Why micro transit? I don't have to tell anyone at the table. I'm sure that transit is evolving. Customer expectations as they move around, the United States sees a lot of things. It's no different in this market at Hampton Roads Transit. The ability to be reactive or proactive toward what customer expectation is, whether it's a mobile fare payment via your cellphone, or whether it's real-time information at the bus stop that you're standing at. There's also expectation that your grandmother's way and your grandfather's way of using transit services via fixed route service isn't the only way to deliver that service. And we're looking at that now with the demand-responsive service. So the pilot deployed small to medium-sized vehicles to provide transit trips based on passenger request. I might live off of Independence Boulevard and I knew I had a medical appointment tomorrow, and I might call or make an appointment through my cellphone for a reservation where I'll be directed to a virtual bus stop, not an actual HRT bus stop, but a corner at a nearest intersection. And I might find a neighbor or two nearby that have a similar destination, maybe used to the Bayside Medical Center. The trip requests from customers who made it through the mobile phone application, or they can call in and request to meet a vehicle at a particular time and location. And just like when you bring in your car, when it's still under warranty, to a dealership for repairs, they have a courtesy shuttle where you might share a ride with a couple of other people that are having a common destination. It's no different here. These trips will be shared with other customers who are at a similar destination, and it originates at a virtual bus stop, and it'll take you to a point of connection to the rest of the HRT system. I'm going to ask Amy Brazil to come up, who actually worked with a contractor. And from here on in, we'll do a little bit of tag team. She was the project manager overseeing the consultant.
Thank you, Ray. Good afternoon. I'm going to share a little bit more details on this service. Ray just kind of explained how the service works. Through VIA, we were able to pair our riders who lived in a neighborhood. You might have myself and Ray, who lives a few blocks away from each other. We were told to go to a virtual bus stop, which was close by. It's not door-to-door service like your Uber or your Lyft. It's virtual stop to virtual stop. And it would take us, if we're both trying to go to a particular shopping center, it would take us both, it would pick us both up along the path and take us to a destination within that shopping center. This pilot project, the city of Virginia Beach, it was 15 square miles for this service. During our marketing, we did identify a number of points of interest that were within the service zone. This zone, it covers a Long Shore Drive, the Fort Story area, along the Bayside Rec Center down to Pembroke and Town Center on the east side. It followed a path along Princess Anne over to Newtown Road at the Light Rail Station. It did touch the Military Circle and Virginia Wesley and College on the west side. This did have connections to seven plus routes and the end-of-line light rail at Newtown. Our service officially launched on July 10 of last year. The hours of operation were Monday through Friday from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We had six vehicles in Virginia Beach. Two of them were wave vehicles, that's wheelchair-accessible vehicles. There were five in Newport News with one wave and nine spares, which is a total of 20 vehicles within the service. This is a picture of the minivans that we use for the service. Like I said, some were wheelchair-accessible. They looked identical to these, just some were able to take on wheelchairs. The results of the pilot. The completed rides by month, this is just for the city of Virginia Beach. As you can see, we start off the first 21 days of July. It was a little low. But over time, the city of Virginia Beach did increase month over month with a pretty decent ridership by the end of the service. We did move just under 10,000 riders within that six-month period of time. This next graph is the month-over-month growth. As you can see, the red lines is the ridership, and the blue lines are the new riders to the service that actually created a login with the app. The total number of passengers by day, you can see that Monday through Friday, we definitely had a high number of ridership. These are your commuters that were taking the service to get to work, and not as many riders on the weekend. This is similar to our bus service as well. The weekday average of passengers by the hour, again, this is very similar to our bus service. We have the peaks in the morning around 7:00 a.m. and again at 5:00 p.m. Not so much during the middle of the day, but definitely the commuter is going to and from work during the day. The average wait times, for the city of Virginia Beach, they waited an average of 9.2 minutes for the service to pick them up from the time that they asked for their ride. And the trip duration, they went an average of 3.7 miles on that trip that they took with our service. The efficiency, this graph shows you the efficiency of the actual service. This is the drivers, the number of trips that they took, and the vehicles. As you can see, between the hours of 8:00 and 11:00, they were not as efficient. We would like to see all of those numbers being very similar to each other, but you can see that there's a period of time between 9:00 and 11:00. During those times, it was only a six-month pilot, so over time, it did change. But during those times, you can see where you can actually move operators to the peaky times and cover more service during the peak times because they're not needed as much during those periods between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. At the end of service, we did conduct a survey. As Ray mentioned, 60% of the respondents from Virginia Beach use this service to get to and from work or school. The zone results, 50%. They connected with other HRT services, whether it be a bus route or a light rail service. And light rail end-of-line was a connection of choice for those passengers in the Virginia Beach zone. Most of them that were connecting to HRT services did go to the light rail. The most popular destinations in your service area was the Newtown Light Rail Station, as I mentioned before, the Walmart Shopping Center, the apartments and townhouses that are located directly behind the Haynes Furniture on Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Town Center area. Those were all the busiest destinations within your service zone.
Thanks, Amy. So a couple of things, there are lessons learned clearly for the state, because I want to apply this statewide, but lessons learned in particular for the city of Virginia Beach and city council. Your zone was pretty unique. You have the route, you have several service, fixed route services in this zone. Route 1 comes down Independence Boulevard from Shore Drive and terminates at Pembroke Mall area. But you have another route that serves the Bayside Rec Center, Bayside High School, the 22, I believe it is. Historically, since its implementation, it's hourly service. It is a marginal service in the sense of how many people it carries for that hour. The whole hypothesis was, can we serve that group and maybe a new group to transit via demand-responsive service instead of serving you by fixed route service? It meets, it barely meets a minimum performance threshold of eight passengers per trips. We're carrying about seven people per hour on the route that uses primarily Independence Boulevard. So that was the key thing from Virginia Beach. Is there a better way to spend the money rather than funding the fixed route service that in this zone, perhaps demand-responsive service would serve it better? Lessons learned from the perspective of the state and for HRT is, first and foremost, we need a longer pilot. The grant stipulated a six-month pilot demonstration, but we need ridership to mature as our marketing and outreach efforts and working with the retail association and the retailers that are in, and the chamber that was in this zone to get the word out. We did kind of figure it out correctly in terms of the fleet size for the demand that materialized in terms of how many vehicles we needed, although we think we need a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, one or two more than we had. Definitely in the survey, it was stated to please keep the fares, not as a premium fare, but match the structure of the local HRT bus fare system, which is $2 for a one-way ride. The zone demand and zone destinations were less than, less, zone destinations out of the zone were a little bit heavier than those that stayed within the zone. So that was interesting. That means it makes connections to a destination that is ultimately not in the cities of Virginia Beach, but someplace else that the people work. We got survey responses, tasked us to consider modifying the geographic shape of the zone related to some destinations that we're not serving the original destination. And then finally, HRT learned that while turnkey services lifts the burden off of HRT because we don't have the smaller vehicles in our fleet today, we don't have non-CDL, non-commercial driver license holders, all of our bus operators hold a CDL. You don't need one to drive a passenger van. Any of you can drive a van if you wanted to. But we don't have them in our fleet yet. But we did learn a little bit that in the six months, that turnkey service delivery might not be the only service delivery method we need to employ. We're going to look at, we're going to do a two- or three-month study in-house to look at other options, perhaps use a technology company to take on the burden of reserving the system and handling customer complaints. But perhaps it's better if we lease the vehicles and we provide the operations. It might be more cost-effective. So those are some of the lessons that we learned. Next steps, last February, we prepared a request for funding from the state for another pilot of 12 months, and we were awarded that grant money in June at the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Each city, the city managers sent us a letter saying that if we were successful in winning the state award, that they were, it's an 80/20 grant. The state provides 80% of the funding and the cities would provide a local match. So we'll come back now and ask if there's still a willingness to participate in a 12-month duration because we did get the state award. In the meantime, in-house, we're initiating a study to determine best service delivery method over the summer so that we can identify a more financially sustainable model that isn't dependent on state discretionary funding. So in conclusion, really what I wanted to say, we're here to report out on what we promised years ago because the money was awarded back before the pandemic. We held up initiating this because during the height of the pandemic, nobody wanted to climb into a minivan with strangers wearing masks and everything else. Everybody had cooties back then. But we're here now reporting, and we're really excited because I think there's a place in the HRT service district, not just in Virginia Beach, in the Bayside Zone. We look before this one in the Salem area, which is a dearth of fixed route service. You have some service on Princess Anne. There are other opportunities in your city and in other cities in our service district that we think there's a place in our stable of service modes for demand-responsive service with that. So I'll stop at this point, and Amy and I would be happy to answer questions if council has questions.
Anybody has questions? Barbara?
Well, it's fascinating. I became a real believer in transit when I represented the city. And it was Tidewater Regional Transit back in that time, and a lot of the issues are still the same. But transit is such an important service, and it's difficult, though, it really is. But this sounds like a great opportunity, but I can see that there are a lot of little bugs that have to be worked out. I'm not sure what you call it now, but back in that day, I think we called it the paratransit. And you still have that.
Yes, we do.
And I noticed that you said you needed more wheelchairs. So this would be able to also supplement that for people who need to go to the doctor's office and that kind of thing. And you seem to have a pretty good reliability. I thought the wait time was reasonable. I know that paratransit has always been such a difficult service. How does this work together with that?
Yes, and you're spot on, Councilwoman Henley. The wheelchair-accessible vehicles, while not every vehicle in the fleet has that ability, so long as you're certified as an eligible paratransit customer, you can use this service. So it just supplements what's already being funded by the city in your annual budgeting process for paratransit service. So it's just another addition, at least for this zone.
Anybody else at this point? Amelia?
Yes, like, again, I want to thank you.
You have something to do with transit.
So you know, whatever I'm involved with, I try to work with them and learn and be a strong advocate. I was there for the dedicated funding. We went up to Richmond, and I'm excited about this, even though I wasn't on council, I came to where you all met at the Virginia Beach Convention Center to prove this, you know, pilot. So what is exciting is it worked. It has been successful, 9.5 minutes. You know how long you wait for many others. That shows right there, you have the survey, you show the, you know, outcome. And then not only did you go that far, you went ahead to get some more funding. So it's not to do with a handout, it's a handout. You went ahead and got more, not only for six months, but 12 months in a 20. And I could see Councilwoman Rouse's head turn when you mentioned about Salem and other areas. In other words, we're moving forward and expanding. And still, that will incentivize the city to look at both cities or whichever group that 20% match. It's not 50/50, but 20% and now expanding. So I'm so glad you came to share this information, to clarify that, yes, it worked, we're not just talking. And I thank you for bringing this forth.
Okay, Patrick?
It's the council, President Harrell. Do you need anything from council today? Because I'm seeing there, with concurrence of the city of Virginia Beach anticipate the quarter 2024 commencement of service. Do we need anything from the city council?
At this moment, no, sir. What we would need is, when the time comes after a request for proposal, sometime after Christmas, if the city is willing to move forward, we'll just need the mechanism in place for the 20% match. And we have that set up from the pilot program with your people and budget and finance. So we'll work through that in the annual TSP process, City Manager.
Hey, anyone else? Yep, Josh? Yep, Josh.
Thank you very much for the report. And, you know, I was just wondering, in terms of marketing this service to people, not just paratransit, but also your fixed route service, what are some of the strategies that you all use and what has been successful? We've heard, I guess anecdotally in other parts of the city where, you know, people, people feel that they may use transit more if it was marketed better or marketed differently. I was just kind of curious, what kind of methods you use in order to increase ridership?
Do you want me to answer, Mr. Harrow? Okay, so that too is changing in an evolving marketplace. The way we get the word out there is a lot different than the old days where you would run an ad in the local newspaper. Now there are social influencers and places like TikTok and places like Instagram. So we have a Facebook page, we have pop-up meetings at nodal activity centers where a lot of passengers come together and fix routes. So we use a wide spectrum that addresses different audience levels and age levels. Younger people like to get their information via the devices that are in front of all of you. They don't get it through print media or, or ads on a billboard. People of my generation, the boomer generation, like to see print media and billboard advertisements and other things. So we have an aggressive, under Mr. Harrow's leadership, new marketing communications department. I think almost all of them are under 30, except for the leadership, but they think differently about getting the word out, things that I would never think of, things that I just probably would frown at. But so TikTok, twerk on the bus, news transit, you know? So, so no, seriously, in answering, we do a lot in terms of getting the word out about service. I think the biggest feedback we get, and we are doing an Argent and Destination Survey this, this summer into the fall to learn more about our customers. We do this every four years. The biggest thing we know is that, or hear is that, why can't we have more frequent services? You know, I often say frequency equals freedom. Hourly service, if I'm late because, I don't know, I forgot to make my lunch before I left the house, I have to wait another hour before the bus comes. So we're very grateful for the amount of money the city provides to fund the services and you have a robust transit network in your city, but a lot of your routes in areas east of the town center still are an hourly service. That's not an inducement for people to use transit when they're, they punch the clock, you know, type of job, service type of jobs, because if you miss, you're late and have to wait another hour for a bus, it only takes two times before they say you're fired, go look for a job elsewhere. So that's our biggest challenge is finding funding and the RTS program from the General Assembly is going to give us that on 13 backbone routes that serve the biggest employers. 15-minute service, that means if I miss a bus, there'll be another one in 15 minutes. Nobody wears a watch anymore. I don't know why I'm doing that. But so frequency does equal freedom and I think that's the thing we're trying to get across. Look what's coming down the road. Our biggest challenge, as Mr. Harrow will tell you, post-pandemic is still the workforce, the bus, the number of bus operators, because the more service you put out, the more people that have to have CDLs drive the buses. And we have a very aggressive partnership with cities and partnership with the private sector to find people who can qualify for a CDL. There are so many rules on the USDOT as well in terms of weight and health and no use of any non-recreational drugs or alcohol. You have to have spotless record. So it's, and it's very competitive because the private sector of the freight services pay so much more than a CDL for public transportation. But the word is out there and we look for any partnerships we can with any of the cities, whether through cable, local cable channels or anything else as well.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep.
Serena.
Say thank you very much for bringing this information forward and the data, because at one time we were looking at, I guess, the depletion of services or perhaps the service going away. But now we see that you have, sort of speak, reinvented yourselves and are now catering to the ridership and finding ways to make sure that they can take advantage of this service. And as we can see, there are overwhelming amount of folks who use it. At one point, the perspective was, nobody's really using it. But again, the data shows that there's a great number of people using the service and I'm just glad to see the data is there and then how we're moving forward to address the needs of the people.
And again, if I may say, Councilwoman Wooten, in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, the entire state, you know what the busiest route in terms of number of passengers carried on an average weekday is the Route 20 on Virginia Beach Boulevard. 4,800 people a day on an average weekday use that route back and forth between Norfolk and the oceanfront. Think about that for a moment, Northern Virginia and Alexandria and all those other areas, no route comes close to that route. That's how productive that route is. So it's a lifeline route because it touches so many employment sites between downtown Norfolk and the oceanfront. It's bringing essential workers to the hotels, the restaurant workers, hotel workers, dishwashers, you name it. They're using that route. So you're spot on in that comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, on behalf of the mayor that is not into social media at all and wants his beeper back. Thank God you're looking at other avenues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, really. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Duhany, I understand that Brett McKenzie has a special person. Okay, so we have some special guests here today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council and Mr. Manager. This afternoon, we are honored to be joined by Captain Steve Genetti, commanding officer of Naval Station Oceana. Captain Genetti was installed as the 48th commanding officer of NAS Oceana this past February. He is a native of New York and a 1997 graduate of the United States Naval Academy. He previously served as the executive officer and commanding officer of the VFA 154 Black Knights and as the air boss on the USS Harry S Truman. He is joined here today by Chairman of the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, Rear Admiral Fenton Priest, U.S. Navy retired, and by Captain Lou Shager, U.S. Navy retired, MEDAC board member, and the 43rd commanding officer of NAS Oceana. Captain Genetti, gentlemen, thank you for being here today.
Hey, welcome.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor. City Manager Patrick Duhany, good afternoon and city council members. I'm Captain Steve Genetti. Joe Ash, good to see you. Again, the commanding officer of Naval Air Station Oceana, and thank you for the introduction. I appreciate my team here. Our executive officer is Captain Josh Appazado over there. As you know, the executive officer for 18 months will fleet up to the commanding officer like I was back in February, and so he will be taking over this role sometime next summer. And then our senior enlisted advisor to the command, our senior enlisted leader there, Command Master Chief Dre Buford. And we have our community plans liaison officer, Johnny Lotterbach, and then our public affairs officer, Mrs. Jackie Parishaw. And thank you, MEDAC members, for joining as well. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this opportunity to speak to you about Naval Air Station Oceana and give you kind of a top-level overview of what we do at Oceana and our base and our people. But what I really like to do is take the opportunity also to invite you over to Naval Air Station Oceana, Damac, when, at your earliest opportunity to visit us. I know we have now a lot of new faces on the council, to visit us, to, to see what we do, to meet the folks that operate and run the base and the folks that live and operate out of, off the base as well. So my staff will join your staff there and try to get you over to the bases as soon as we can. Next slide, please. So this, this summer, we're actually, oop, drive the clicker? All right. So this summer, we are marking on August 17th here in about a month, our 80th anniversary of becoming a naval air auxiliary air station. So our first commanding officer there in 1943, you see on the left, is Lieutenant Jesse Farley. And then representative of the type of aircraft that flew right over Virginia Beach in 1945 is an F6F Hellcat and over Princess Anne County. If you look on the roads there, this is kind of looking from the northeast down to what is, was the northeast side of the base and obviously expanded over the last 80 years. And that's Potter's Road that runs left or right on the screen there. Next slide, please. That's me. All right. So overall mission, we are here to support the warfighter, the fleet, the fighter and the family. All the Atlantic Fleet's strike fighter aircraft, specifically the F-18 EF Super Hornet, is based out of NAS Oceana. We have the four carrier air wings that deploy on those aircraft carriers that you see in the photo, and we have some of our units also support some Pacific Fleet carriers and their air wings. We like to think of Naval Air Station Oceana as really a floating aircraft carrier ashore. We, we have all the same capabilities as far as air operations, the capabilities with our aircraft and also all the maintenance, all the depot level and everything that we have on an aircraft carrier, we have ashore at Oceana to sustain the capabilities of both the aircraft assets and then all the men and women that train and employ those aircraft out of Oceana. The other thing is we also support the joint international operations and training. So both at Oceana and Damac Annex, we support different joint services as well as interagencies that come in, operate and train off of Virginia Beach and Mid-Atlantic, right out of Oceana and Damac. We support that every, pretty much every day throughout the year. And we provide those resources and train to conduct all that training over the air, land and sea operations up and down the eastern seaboard. All comes out of operations out of Oceana. So some by the numbers, when you say Naval Air Station Oceana, we are three, three installations, both NAS Oceana that everyone's familiar with, as well as Damac Annex right on the beach line, and then down in Chesapeake, Virginia, Naval Air Auxiliary Landing Field Ventress. There's a numbers roughly of how many we have as far as active duty service members, DOD civilians, contractors, dependents that live on and around the base, for a total of over 37,000 is the total. And then that economic impact of over $2.06 billion is a 2020 figure, so definitely north of that is what we're looking at for our current economic impact for Virginia Beach. To give you an idea of air operations, we are a very, very busy airfield. Like I mentioned earlier, our tenant commands, if you will, represented by the patches on the right side of the screen, we have four carrier air wings that deploy on aircraft carriers. So right now, on the top right, Carrier Wing Eight is deployed on the JAR Ford in the Mediterranean. And in those patches that you see below them, the four squadrons are deployed on that, on that carrier with Carrier Wing Eight. We have a total of 14, a total of those F-18 Super Hornet squadrons stationed at Oceana. We have one Hornet Training Squadron, VFA 106, the Fleet Replacement Squadron. That is over 50 aircraft and 1,200 personnel just in that one squadron that trains all East Coast, both maintainers and air crew in that aircraft. We have an aggressor squadron called VFC 12 that's painted up camouflage and flies our adversaries' profiles to help our training and support of our strike fighter air crew. We also have one C-40, which is a 737 that you see flying in and out of Oceana. We have that base and they fly all around the world with DOD missions coming out of Oceana. So in total, if we had everyone home, we'd have over 200 aircraft on the ramp at, at Oceana. We, we are 24/7, 365 airfield to support all DOD requirements. Everything in the Department of Defense inventory aircraft-wise can come, could land and come into Naval Air Station Oceana, from your large C-5 galaxies, which I'm sure you've seen those aircraft in the air, thinking how, how they can fly and stay up in the air, all the way down to our fighter jets that you see flying around every day. And just last year, 2022, over 133,000 flight operations between Oceana and Ventress. And that, every flight operations is a, is a takeoff and landing. We average, again, about 200 plus, excuse me, 600 or so a day. And then, as you can see there, 84,000 controlled tower radar en route sorties and then over 49,000 just down at Ventress alone. And the field carrier landing practice is where air crew train to land on the aircraft carrier. So both day and night operations, there's a carrier box, all the lighting, all the visual aids that they need to land on the aircraft carrier is represented at Ventress. So they'll take off from Oceana, head down there, go around the pattern and then head back to Oceana, all getting ready to go out to the aircraft carrier. And then you see here, we have about 600 unmanned aircraft system operations supporting, again, all units from Oceana, Damac, and even supporting units from Jeb Little Creek and Fort Story. So that's the overall kind of a big picture of how we execute air operations at Oceana. Now, I threw this slide up here for Damac Annex. If you're not aware, three and a half miles of oceanfront, beachfront property there, all the way from the southern part of Croatan to the top part of Sandbridge Beach. And then there's kind of a top-level review. It is a, basically a schoolhouse environment for the most part, Trainer Center of Excellence. It started back in 1943 initially as kind of an air gunnery, sorry, 1941 is an anti-aircraft gunnery range, and as it expanded into quite a few schoolhouses. Every single Navy and Marine Corps intel specialist, both officer and enlisted, will go through Damac Annex at one point in their career for training. And then we have all sorts of other type of training, both for surface ships, radar systems and so forth, all coming through Damac Annex. So annually, about 20,000 students all come in for courses of instruction. Also, every carrier strike group and amphibious readiness group, so your, your big deck amphib ships will go out when they train off the coast, East Coast, all the way down to Florida and up to the VaCapes. All their training also has a synthetic part of it, and that synthetic training for that high-end evaluations prior for them deploying comes out of Damac Annex and is run out of Damac. And then also home to various, some key national defense assets as well. So seems like a pretty sleepy base, but is actually very active. And as you see there, kind of on the right side of the screen, that is Damac Boulevard that runs right in. That's the one main gate that goes into Damac Annex. So when we have several thousands of folks that come on and off the base every day, going through that, that one piece of, of property and then through that one gate. And as I have note, have note for the city council, as Sandbridge Road gets expanded and continues its, its upgrades, we still have as a memorandum of agreement with the city that if anytime Sandbridge Road is flooded or has, it's not passable, we do have an agreement with Virginia Beach and the police, we will open up Sandbridge Gate and we'll let all the residents come through the base and out onto Damac so they can get to and from their homes when it's unpassable. So that is all set up and luckily not had to be used last year, but has been used several times over the years. Of course, we're looking forward to our, one of our main attractions and then really the biggest event that we hold at, at Oceana and something that we could not do without the, the cooperation and the partnership with the city of Virginia Beach. It would be impossible to make this a huge open house, which is probably one of the Department of Defense's largest open houses around the country, to make it even possible. 2022, we had the record crowd estimating over 300,000 folks between the Friday show, practice show and STEM Day, which I'll discuss, all the way to the open house to the general public on Saturday and Sunday. As I mentioned, that Friday of the airshow is where we have all 5,500 fifth graders in the entire Virginia Beach Public School System, get bused in the afternoon to the airshow, plus their chaperones, so it comes out to be about 7,000 folks and their buses. They get dropped off and they get an entire STEM field day trip at the airshow while there's a practice, the practice show, and they get to watch the Blue Angels perform prior to getting on their buses as well. So like I mentioned, we could not do the entire coordination to make the airshow possible without Virginia Beach Police, Fire, EMS, emergency management, and all the way up to the state, state level and federal level to make it possible, both traffic, public safety, traffic control, response options and everything. It's a, it's an incredible feat. We even have our annual pre-airshow mass casualty drill that'll be next Thursday on the 20th, where we already have, most of the city will be participating and helping us going through a mass casualty drill on the base, and that'll go out to the hospital systems as well to, to help train and make, facilitate the cooperation with the, with the hospital systems as well if there's a mass casualty. So continue our growing heritage. At Oceana, we've, we've chosen a theme or continue the theme, if you will, for naval aviation. In 2023, this marks the 50th anniversary of the first women to become naval aviators. 50 years ago, eight women started flight school down in Pensacola, Florida, and six 50 years ago, eight women started flight school down in Pensacola, Florida, and six were winged. And some of them have been stationed and lived here in Virginia Beach and stationed at Oceana themselves. So that, that will be the continuing this year's theme. As you can see the photo on the left there, Captain Rosemary Mariner, one of the first original women of aviators with the photo there in the top center, she was stationed here at Oceana and lived in Virginia Beach for many years. The top right there in 2019, when Captain Rosemary Mariner passed away, her memorial flyover team was flown by Super Hornets right out of Oceana and flown by all female aircrew that you see there in that photo on the right. And then the top center, if you were, if you recall from the Super Bowl earlier this year that kicked off the anniversary, the entire Super Bowl flyover team was flown by women naval aviators. So really our enduring partnership is, is integral to how Oceana and Dam Neck is able to function. We are not just located smack dab in the middle of Virginia Beach. We are, we are an integral part. I know we, we talked to Mayor Patrick as the city manager for Virginia Beach, Chief of Police, Fire, all the time about how we can improve processes, what we can do to integrate ourselves and, and really consult with one another to interact and to cooperate to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're all aligned, lockstep in what we need to do to, to continue the operations and for folks living on and off our bases. We train together, like we mentioned, with our drills and we exercise all the time. We have constant tabletops and planning sessions to make sure that we're, we're all aligned and we can all speak the same, same, same music and we can, we can operate flawlessly in case needed and, and on a daily basis. So Oceana remains fully committed to working with Virginia Beach and we're fully committed to all of our mutual interests to continue to resolve any matters and to keep us operational and to be a great, I guess, a great neighbor to the, the city of Virginia Beach and the state of Virginia. So those are my prepared remarks.
Okay. If I could, you know, just start things off with a comment and then we'll open up for questions. You know, it, it's a remarkable relationship that we've had. It's been a seamless continuum of excellence since we were put on the BRAC list a number of years ago. And the relationship has been nothing but short of phenomenal. Recently, one of the big bosses, Admiral Rock, at his retirement, and please understand, he had every naval installation between here and Chicago, said Virginia Beach was by far the easiest, most friendly to deal with. And I think, I think that, you know, is a credit to, you know, a lot of people doing a lot of things. And I often say that you're part of the DNA of Virginia Beach. You not only live here, it's not only the fact that your strategic location is vital to the national defense of this country, but you're the, not only the economic impact that you have by the employees that you have here and that type of thing, but the fact is that, you know, all of your sailors and their families are in our schools and they're working in hospitals, schools and, you know, coaching soccer teams and doing anything. You are a vital part of our community. So once again, I just want to thank you. And am I wrong in saying there was a female pilot from Virginia Beach that is now with the Blue Angel?
Yes. Lieutenant Amanda Lee is number three. She, she went to ODU for her bachelor's degree and get her commission, her, receive her commission as an officer. And then she, her first tours have been here at Oceana and she was just an instructor with VFA 106 instructing in the Super Hornet when she was picked up for the Blue Angels. So this will be her first time coming back to Oceana as a Blue Angel. So we'll see her in September. So definitely invite all of you to the airshow. And, and again, I like to reiterate that we'd love to have the entire council over to Oceana to visit and to really show you what the men and women are doing at Oceana.
You certainly have a legacy that makes Virginia Beach great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, again, I sort of remember the times during the rapid development of Virginia Beach that the captains used to come down quite regularly to see the city when we were developing. And I think Danny Michaels thought he was a member of the council. He came so many times because as we developed, it was important that we hear from Oceana about each development and the impacts and so forth. And I guess all of that culminated with the BRAC when we really got to be believers in the fact that if we want to keep Oceana here, we have to make certain that our decisions are compatible with Oceana. And, you know, we all know about ECUs and all of that stuff. With the BRAC came the designation of this flyway between Oceana and Fentress to be the interfacility traffic area. Because before that time, I guess, Oceana was looking for an outline feel and you kind of determined that Fentress was going to be it. We have to make sure that remains. And so the ITA has really become one of our critical areas in the city. But one thing that I think we did, and I appreciate the council being willing to do it, was we developed the land use plan for the ITA to let the property owners there know how they could use their property beneficially for themselves and the city, but also to be compatible with the, with Oceana. And I think it's worked very well. And I know we have the process that when there are applications that are to be developed anywhere that has to do with the ECUs, we have the committee that meets and so forth. And I just kind of, I think it's, it's from where I'm sitting, it looks like it's working well. And I, I hope that that's the way you all feel about it.
Absolutely. We agree. Yes, ma'am. We, we definitely concur and we, we do, we've been dealing with that recently and we continue to, to work with that. Johnny Lauterbach, our C PLO, our community plan liaison has been, fortunately for us, have been here for a long time, went through the whole BRAC in, during that timeframe. So has all the history and continuity with that. So we're very lucky and fortunate to have him as well, but also to, to really work with the city and, and stay on the same page and move along.
Well, I think when that first message from BRAC came that Oceana was not going to survive, I think everybody became believers and
Yes, ma'am.
Since that time, I think it, I think it's really, I, I think our developers, our property owners all appreciate that they need to make sure that whatever they're doing is compatible with Oceana. And, and it's kind of one of the first things that we ask if we have a development proposal in that area is what does Oceana say? So I, I think that from where I sit at least, we certainly want to make sure we're making the right decisions. And, and I think as we move forward with this proposal that you have to utilize some of the properties surrounding Oceana, I think it's an opportunity for all of us to, to meet some of our expectations and needs, but also to the importance of working together. So I really appreciate your annual reports and how well we're doing and so forth.
Absolutely.
Look forward to, to making that work as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else at this point? Captain, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
miraculous folks that you work with. You help make us great. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Moving on now is a roadway safety update by LJ Hanson requested by the members of city council.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time LJ Hanson, your Public Works Director, will come and provide you some information and statistics about the traffic crashes and fatalities that's been going on in Virginia Beach, but also nationally and locally as well. And basically the goal and purpose of this presentation is to have Public Works talk to you about what we're doing to reverse these crash trends and also potential steps that council can take to help enhance our traffic safety.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Thank you for having me here today to talk about roadway safety. I'm fortunate to be joined by a few folks here today. I, I want to recognize Chief of Police, Nutigate, and also Lieutenant Scott Merce from Virginia Beach PD. They're going to keep me honest on anything that I say and hopefully they jump up and, and tell me when I'm wrong, but I don't think that I am wrong on anything here. I'm also joined by Rick Lowman. I never think that I'm wrong if I'm honest. My wife will tell you that. I'm also joined by Rick Lowman, the City Traffic Engineer. He's going to give a second part to this presentation about neighborhood calming. But the first part of this presentation I want to talk about is stuff that doesn't traditionally fall into the neighborhood calming program scope. And I want to talk a little bit about just what's going on in terms of roadway safety. And I'm going to start off talking a little bit about national trends and some of the national trends that we see. On this chart that's, that's identified here, the top chart, the, the blue dotted line represents a number of fatalities over the last 10 years, 20 years, 10 years. And the number below that is adjusted for number of vehicles per 100,000. And what you see is that, you know, they, they follow the same scope, but we saw a, a pretty much a decline in the number of fatalities for many years, you know, starting 1975, getting to about 2016. But what we also saw was about the time of the pandemic, we saw a rapid uptick. And I'm going to show you slides that move from the national to the state and then to the region and then to our area. But I'd like you to kind of pay attention to this trend and, and what you'd see if, if, you know, looking at these headlines that have been grabbed from some articles and some national reports is that what we saw coming out of the, what we saw during the pandemic was an uptick in speeds and an uptick in fatalities. And that trend unfortunately has kind of stayed with us. So the last one was the national data. This is the state roadway data overall. And I've got a number of slides with some charts. I'm going to try and move through them relatively quick, but I'm going to, I'll take just a bit of time on the first one to kind of set the, set the tone so you know what you're looking at. That blue line on the top, that's the number of overall crashes. The orange line is the number of fatalities and the gray line on the bottom is number of injuries. Now I've included injuries. I'm not going to talk a lot about injuries, but I do want to talk about those, those blue lines and the orange lines. What you'll see is this same trend as I move from state to region to our locality. We, we see that the overall number of crashes is relatively flat. There's a, there's a downturn in 2020, which we would expect because there weren't a lot of people on, there weren't a lot of people out on the roads. There were a lot of people that got to stay home and, and work from home or, or do other things. But even during that trend, the number of fatalities continued to rise and that's the orange line. And there's a dotted line that runs through both the blue and the orange, and that represents trend. That's a, that's a linear trend analysis. There's a couple of different ways to do trend analysis, but for this, this one linear seemed to be the most appropriate. The gray chart on the right is the same, except that that one is adjusted for number of miles because the number, you know, it, it seems reasonable to assume that there's more people on the road, more, more miles being driven, therefore that's why more accidents are happening. But when we, when we adjust it for the number of miles that are being driven, the trend stays the same. So it's not just about the fact that there's more people on the road, more miles being driven every year, the trend stays the same. Now this is the, the state roadway data and these are speed related crashes. So same, same trend that we see across, right? Relatively flat in terms of number of accidents, fatality rates going up. This is our regional roadway safety data. This comes out of the regional Hampton Roads Transportation TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization puts out this report every year. This is out of the 22 report. The green line along the top, number of accidents, orange red-ish line shows the same trend. And if you, if you looked at what their numbers would say, they would reinforce what I just said from the national and from the state. One of the things I also pulled out of that report, and, and this is relevant to us, is the number of regional bike and pedestrian fatalities. The one on the left is the number of crashes that involve pedestrians and bicyclists. Those numbers are, you know, declining, relatively flat. But if you look at the right, the number of fatalities, and again, this is in the region, it's, it's staggered and it really took a sharp uptick in 2021. This is the data that I'm sure you're all interested in. What, what's going on in Virginia Beach? Well, if you look at that trend, again, the blue line is trending down. That's the number of accidents are actually trending down. But if you look at the number of fatalities, it's trending up. The gray line along the bottom is number of injuries. Now, I, I want to be very clear and I want to represent this data fairly. We're a locality that has about 25, we have a, we have a small number of fatalities annually compared to the state and the national level. So when you look at data like this, there's a great amount of variability. We didn't see that level of variability when we looked at the state, but of course we, we do here. But nevertheless, the trend line still bears out that, that we are still seeing an uptick in the number of fatalities. Again, the one on the left is crashes, injuries and fatalities in Virginia Beach. The one on the right is speed related, crashes, injuries and fatalities. And speed related just means that speed was identified as a, as a potential indicator in the, in the accident report. And then going back to the slide that I presented on, on pedestrian fatalities, that is bearing that exact same trend. The number of accidents goes down, but the number of fatalities goes up. This is through 2022. Now I'm sad to report there was in fact, another fatality last night, also a pedestrian. That brings us to the total of seven for the year, seven fatalities in, in terms of pedestrians. It is worth noting, in looking at the accident reports, five, excuse me, six of those seven fatalities were not identified as the vehicle's fault. Now, that doesn't mean the vehicle was scot-free, doesn't mean that they weren't exceeding the speed limit. It means that there was some action on the part of the pedestrian that contributed to the accident and, and therefore they did not cite the driver of the vehicle as being the sole reason. There is one exception to that rule. I'm, I'm not going to take the opportunity to get into each and every one of the, of the incidents that we've had. I don't think this is appropriate forum for that. But nevertheless, I, I do think it's important to point out those trends and, and help us to understand that perhaps there's something going on with, with how our pedestrians and bicycles are interacting with our vehicles. So what are some of the factors that could be causing these trends or that we know to be causing these trends? First of all, speed was identified. You could see in those charts that speed related, uh, speed related accidents definitely followed the same exact trend. And I don't think it's, it's really a, a difficult thing to say that there's, there's more speeding going on, right? We see it on the interstates, we see it on our arterials, our connectors, and we see it in our residential streets. As the Public Works Director, I get phone calls from almost all of you members of city councils with, with concerns from your constituents about speeding in their community. Well-founded concerns. We're going to talk a little bit about that here in just a minute. Distracted driving. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of a game. And anytime that I'm not driving the vehicle, I go down the road and I count how many people are on their cell phone at going down the highway. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a sad game, but I keep setting new highs. We, we've got to put our phones away when we get behind the wheel and I, I don't know how to make that happen. I, as a Public Works Director, I, I can't force the traveling public to put their phones away, but somehow or another, we've got to start really explaining to them that, that there's a, that this is just something that we've got to do. Aggressive driving. And this is one of the things that we really saw as an uptick as a result of the pandemic. I think, you know, we got kind of anxious. There was a lot going on and we were, we were uptight about a lot of things and that that kind of carried into our driving and it has, it started off on the interstates, but then it kind of moved to the arterials and, and now it kind of follows into the other smaller roadway network. We, we see where people make rapid adjustments in their vehicle. They move quickly from lane to lane, they dart, they, they don't use a turn signal. And, and when I say they, I, I should say we, right? Cause we are they in this setting. It's our city and to be honest, we're the ones that are driving the roads. So if, if, if I'm saying they, I really mean we should probably all be checking what it is that we're doing. Impairments. I'm glad to say that on the, on the whole, most of the reports that we looked at showed that drinking and driving has gone down. We, we're seeing some very positive trends in terms of drinking and driving. However, we have new challenges that don't involve alcohol and impairments can take other forms now. And so that is something that we are, we're not exactly sure how to track that yet. That, that's a, that's a, that's a new, that's a new thing and we're not entirely sure what that looks like yet. And of course, we have a state legislature that's kind of ambivalent about where we are on the use of recreational drugs. But I, I expect that what we saw in other states who legalized marijuana was an uptick in, in terms of impairment as a result of recreational drugs. I would expect Virginia's no different and, and that's something And that's something, again, that we will have to pay attention to. And then one of the other things I wanted to point out that, that really is, is not a, it's not a behavior issue, it's, it's just a factor of what it is that we're doing. Vehicle size. I believe that Rick told me the other day, it was at 80, 80% of all the vehicles sold in 2022 were either SUVs or pickup trucks. Those are the biggest vehicles that we have, the hardest vehicles to see from, and the vehicles that do the most damage when they hit something. So vehicle size is definitely something that's different. And one of the other things that I would also like to point out is that as our vehicles, as we advance our vehicle technology and we have lane-changing technology and bumper sensing technology and all the other technologies, we tend to let the vehicle do more things for us. It's, that's not the intent. The intent is to allow all those things to help us be better drivers. And, and, and we have seen on occasion where somebody said, well, I didn't, I didn't know. I didn't see this. And so it's important, again, going back to, when we get behind the wheel, are we ready to be behind the wheel? Are we doing what it is that we need to do? Now, these are a lot of social issues and a lot of things that you might not expect the Director of Public Works to talk about. And in, in truth, there's probably better people to deliver those messages about how we should behave. But I, I wanted to let you know how that affects us in terms of what it is that we're trying to do for roadway safety. Most of the issues that I just mentioned are not things that I can design a road around. I can't design a road that makes you put your cell phone down. I can't design a road that tells you not to drive aggressively or to do anything else that is, that is an unfavorable action behind the wheel. We count on enforcement to, to do those things. But enforcement right now is, is going through their own set of challenges. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on some of it and the, the chief and Lieutenant Mercer here, if they, if you'd like to have more information about what that means. And then some of the other things that I wanted to talk about are some of the recommendations that we often get from citizens about how we can solve the problem of speeding. And specifically, you know, we get, we get requests all the time, but if you just throw a traffic signal in there, that'll slow everybody down. Or if you just reduce the speed limit, that, then everybody slows down. And I want to talk to you a little bit about that and why we don't all the time think that that is the right solution. With regard to enforcement, I mentioned, I talked about it briefly. One of the things that we identified was the fact that pedestrians and, and the number of fatalities and the number of accidents that we've had this year and last year combined involving pedestrians has gone up starkly. But even if we had a police officer at one of those locations and a pedestrian was doing something wrong, if that was the only thing they were doing wrong, the law does not allow the police officer to stop them. So I don't know about you all, but when I was a kid, if you were jaywalking, that was like, it was a joke, but you could get pulled over for jaywalking, right? And usually that was a pretense to stop you and ask you what else you were doing and if you were doing anything else wrong. Unfortunately, that pretense has developed into rules that say we can't help people protect themselves from being able to cross where they're not supposed to cross. And so that is, that is a challenge. I know that this body hears about vacancies and other draws on the, on the police resources. Again, I won't try and speak to Chief Nutigate's challenges there, but I'm, I'm sure that this body is aware of that. And then additionally, a lack of support in legal challenges. There have been a number of legal challenges that have gone to state and even beyond trying to challenge what it is that's happening. And most of those responses have not come back favorably. There, there have been a lot of challenges to what the police officer faces when, when they issue citations. And so that can be a real, a real challenge on the police officer as well. It's hard to demonstrate exactly what it is that, that the offender is being charged with in some cases, so. I, I mentioned that I would talk a little bit about traffic signals and, and speed limits. Traffic signals, they're a great tool to manage traffic flows. If you have an intersection of a major road and a minor road, and a minor road has enough traffic on it that it needs to enter that major road, that's a great tool, that's a great place to put a traffic signal. But if there's not enough traffic that comes from that minor road, it's a terrible tool. And the reason for that is because every time we put in a traffic signal, the number one danger that we have is we increase the number of rear end accidents. And now you would, you might ask, well, why would you ever put a traffic signal then? Well, a rear end accident is less severe than a side impact accident. And so if we have a number of side impact accidents at a location, then it makes sense to put in a traffic signal because we'd rather have a rear end accident, which is less severe than to have the side impact accident. But if there's no side impact accidents to demonstrate the need, and there's not enough vehicles to demonstrate the need, then all we're doing is introducing an element that we didn't have before. Yellow light gunning, I'm sure we're all familiar with, you know, the, the intent of trying to make a yellow light and, and, you know, stepping on the gas and, and trying to, you know, get through the intersection before it turns red. And then one of the other things I wanted to point out as a side effect that a lot of people don't think about is that when a traffic signal goes in, you get aggressive and impatient driving behaviors. And oftentimes that inspires people to jump off the main route and start taking residential or roads that are really not suited because they're trying to get around the traffic. They're trying to get around the light. You know, I know a shortcut. And, and, and the reality is that's, that's one of the things that happens is when we put in a traffic signal. So oftentimes, and for, for your constituents, I, I'm going to say I'm sorry, but we don't all the time think that putting in a traffic signal is the right solution. And we will use the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, to be our guide as traffic engineers to tell us when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate to put in a traffic signal. But just trying to slow down the speed on the main arterial, that is not the appropriate time and place to put in a traffic signal. And we oftentimes recommend that. And I know it can be frustrating for you all and for your constituents. One of the other things I mentioned in, in the yellow light gunning is that red light runners cause hundreds of deaths and tens of thousands of injuries each year. And I just took these statistics in case, in case you didn't believe me. In 2021, 1,109 people were killed nationally in crashes that involved red light running. And half of those killed were pedestrians, bicyclists and people in other vehicles who were hit. So it wasn't themselves necessarily. Nationwide in 2021, an estimated 127,000 people were injured by red light running crashes. And the reason for that is, going back to my comment about when a traffic signal is appropriate, when it's not appropriate. When you're sitting at a traffic signal and the light turns green in front of you, you assume it's safe to go, as you should. But when you assume it's safe to go and you pull out and somebody runs that red light, you were not thinking about was it safe to go or not safe to go? And that's, that's a, that's a big part of why traffic signals are not always the great panacea. They can introduce more severe crashes and they can introduce more severe problems. And then I wanted to talk briefly also about lowering the speed limit to control speed. The conventional thinking is that my roadway is 35 miles an hour and people are going 45. So if you change it to 25, they'll only go 35. That's not true. And, and study after study after study shows that that does not happen. What happens is people continue to go 45. And they go 45 not because the number on the sign says 25 or 35, they go 45 because that's how the road feels like it should be. The number, the amount of traffic, the width of the road, the straightness of the road, all of those things factor into our decisions because we're, we're all tuned in to driving. I've been driving, it occurred to me when I was preparing for this, I've been driving for over 40 years. I almost never look at the speed limit sign. And I say that with the chief of police sitting right here.
He's undercover today, so.
I, I don't. And the reason I don't is because I know that Rick is sitting over here. And when, when we're talking about what's the appropriate speed limit, we set it based upon what the 85th percentile of speed is. And that's how people drive the road based upon its conditions. So if we artificially lower the speed limit, it does this thing that creates, it's called a speed differential, which is where people that are familiar with the road, they might slow down. The people that actually want the, the speed limit slowed down, they might slow down. But the other people who are not familiar with the road and they're not reading the speed limit sign, they're going to go like the road is built. And so now you've got people that are going 45, people who think, oh, maybe this is a 35, and you've got people that are driving 25. And what happens when you have that speed differential then is you have the potential for more impacts and more collisions and, and, and more serious accidents. And so again, I know that there's a temptation to just change the speed limit, but that's just, that is in and of itself not usually the solution to the problem. So I'd like to talk about a couple of things that, that can work better. One is education. I, I talked about, you know, our handheld devices and, and what it is that we do. I think that there's a role for education and I think that Virginia Beach, you know, that this is something that we might be able to work with our communications department, work with the police department. I don't have an answer for you today. I don't have this whole program all specked out and scoped, but I do think that there's some value in us working together as a community to, to try and help our citizens to remember that we live here, we work here, our children are here, our neighbors are here. And, and, and these are the things that we should do before we get behind the wheel. Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, I'm going to talk about that for just a second. But basically, the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan is, it's a, it's a plan we're required to have as we go forward and look for funding for some of our safety projects, that we have something in place that'll help us to identify where some of the areas in the city that, that have greater problems than others and, and give some data to what it is that we're applying, when we're applying for funds. And then traffic safety improvements, and we'll talk a little bit about those as we move through. The Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, as I just mentioned, staff are currently engaged in developing the plan. It's an, it's an analysis of the conditions that exist, history of crashes, that type of thing. And then when it's all done, we'll bring it back to city council, we'll ask you to adopt it, and then we'll, we're required to update it every five years. And again, this will help us as we apply for state and federal grants that, that are geared towards safety improvements. The Traffic Safety Improvement 4, this is a CIP, this is a, the existing CIP version that is in the city's capital improvement plan. We have about 18.3 million in program costs for the 2429 CIP. Now, this money usually, this money can be split between standalone projects. And we have some projects that we've done where we've used money straight out of this CIP and gone in and done intersection improvements to add a crosswalk or some pedestrian heads or, or something like that. Oftentimes, we use this as match money when we go after transportation alternative tap funds, and it helps us to cover those. With increases in demand for these types of projects, and again, I, I think there's reason to say we probably should be looking at, at doing some more projects, especially as we talk about the fatality numbers for pedestrians. This, this seems to be the right place for us if we wanted to, to try to, to look to do additional programs. But again, if we were to increase the number of projects or what the scope is, we would be looking for additional funding here. Speed cameras, this, this can be a little controversial, but it's a tool, right? As we talk about the challenges in enforcement, one of the tools that's available to us is that we could use speed cameras in certain locations. Now, the Virginia State Legislature limits us in the number of places that we can put speed cameras. And just for your information, we currently have cameras on a select number of red lights or traffic signals, I should say. So they're red light detection cameras. And then we also have them on our school buses. So we are currently using this type of technology in the city of Virginia Beach. But the one thing that we don't use it for is for speed enforcement. And again, going back to what the state law allows us, is for school crossing zones and highway work zones. That is currently the extent that the Virginia Legislature allows us. If this is something that's of interest at these locations, is something that we could certainly pursue, there is, it's a lengthy code section, there's a number of requirements that go in there. I would tell you that at least two of our neighboring communities, Chesapeake and Suffolk, have started deploying speed cameras in these settings. And actually, you can see the cameras here, how they, how they might look and how they might work. So in a school zone, the, the picture right in the middle, the school zone would only be speed enforced during the hours that students are in place. And, and again, a work zone could be similar. So work zones can be fixed, they can be mobile like the one that's shown here. There's a number of different choices, a number, number of different ways to go. I don't have a lot of asks of city council today, but I, I would like to know if this body is at all interested in us exploring the use of speed photo enforcement. Is this something that this council thinks is a good idea or, or if it's something that you flat out don't like? And, and I get it, some people do not like the idea of speed cameras. Some people consider it to be the wrong solution. Now, the, again, the only place that the Virginia State Legislature allows us to do it is in the, the two areas that I identified, the school zones and in the work zones. So to do more would require some kind of action at the Virginia State Legislature. But to be fair, I do think that there's places where it could be utilized more. Rick's going to talk about the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and I do think that it's a potential tool that could be in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, word allowed. I know that there are a number of constituents that have reached out about cut-through streets or streets where they would, you know, that don't qualify for the Neighborhood Calming Program. That might be a potential area that, that we could consider. Also, there's nothing in here to account for parks, rec centers, libraries or any other type of community center. So if the potential exists that we might, you know, consider petitioning the state legislature to do something like that. And then lastly, I just want to say that, as I mentioned, we will be back to discuss the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan as it develops and then request adoption by city council. And then Rick's going to speak next on the traffic calming, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And I don't know if you'd like to, if you have questions for me now or if you'd prefer that we wait till the end and Rick give his discussion?
I'll tell you at this point, any questions for now? Okay, well, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, does council have any interest in staff exploring the traffic cameras in school zones where we're permissible?
Yeah, okay, thoughts, Rocky?
I would say yes, we explore it everywhere we can with the speeding because it's certainly something to look at and see what, what's available.
Worth, and then Amelia, then Michael.
I agree. I think we should explore speed cameras in conjunction with law enforcement. And I believe maybe the General Assembly has looked into or passed some bills to allow localities to use speed cameras in addition to school zones.
Okay, Amelia, then Michael, and then Barbara.
Yes, I agree with what my colleagues are saying. And we also need to make the communities aware of its limitations. Because right now, a lot of people think it should be all over the place. And you're saying school zones, work zones, and many are not aware of that and wondering why we don't have it everywhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Michael, and then Barbara.
Agree. I do think it's, pardon me if you already noted this, it's a civil citation, not a criminal citation in the way that traffic is. I do have a question about the school buses. This is following up a constituent concern that I've been hearing a lot about in Scarborough Square. Do you know if the cameras on school buses, are they for speeding or are they also for running the school bus lights or both? Because we're having a, a major problem with vehicles running the school bus lights on Warwick Drive in Scarborough Square. And there are communities requesting those type of cameras, but I don't know what the capability is.
I would tell you that the schools administer that part of the program, but it is only, it is only to the degree that it monitors passing when the school bus has the stop sign out and it's in the stop.
That's what's happening.
Councilmember Director Hanson, it's only for the failure to yield to the discharge or the picking up of students, it's not for speed enforcement.
So, but it does, and it does issue a ticket?
It, it does, it's a civil citation. I don't have the numbers for that, but as we're talking about those tickets for the photo safe, for the red light cameras that we have, we issue about 35,000 to 40,000 of those alone a year, but I can get you the numbers.
From the buses?
Not from the buses, but from our, from the red light cameras, sir.
The red light, um, buses, you don't have those numbers, but also while, while you're there, if I could ask, what is the impact of those cameras in school zones?
You know, we would look at it from the perspective of whether we're actually seeing crashes and injuries in those locations and see what the data supports. I don't think the data supports that those are locations where we're having excess number of crashes. Where it could benefit the police department is because we do deploy officers specifically to those locations. So there is a potential that if we did deploy speed cameras in the school zones, then we could deploy our officers elsewhere in the community to address some of these concerns. And that would be, that would be one way that we would look at it from the PD perspective.
Thank you, chief. I'll follow up with you about the other thing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Barbara.
You've got a lot of analysis.
You've got a lot of analysis, and that's really good. In doing all of this analysis, have we shown that there are certain locations that are more prone to having these fatality issues? Because I think the traffic fatalities are something that are, I mean, that's preventable, and
Do you want to?
Whatever we can to prevent them. But, I mean, for example, whether or not it's in school zones or whatnot, but do we have areas that seem to be most prone to these kinds of crashes?
Unfortunately, no, because of the low number that we have, when we only average 21 fatality accidents per year, and it's not in the same location. So what we do do is look specifically at those locations where we're having a significant number of injury crashes, and try to impact those locations before we do have a fatality. So we're very cognizant about those locations, we deploy resources. You know, enforcement is a big piece. You know, the good news that we do have Councilmember Henley is we have stepped up the speeding enforcement. When we looked at the numbers, we have already issued 64% of the tickets that we wrote last year, and we're only halfway through the year. So our officers are really taking to heart our request for them to go out and address the aggressive driving. We partner with Director Hanson Schop, and I know they're going to talk about traffic calming, but there's dedicated funds for our officers to go out on overtime and address those critical locations and those speeding conditions. We've invested in radar and LIDAR in almost all of our cars to give our officers the tool to address this. So we are making some steps, but enforcement is just one piece of that triangle. It's enforcement, education is the director mentioned, and then, of course, the environment. So we need to focus on all three.
Anyone else at this point? Yeah, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, the second bullet point. Does Council have any interest with staff possibly exploring to where traffic cameras are in force or allowed as part of the legislative package or further review?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just a thought, as you raise that question, Mr. Manager, if perhaps asking that question and taking a look at it in connection with this Comprehensive Safety Action Plan might be a good idea, and, I mean, I think there might be some interest, but maybe, maybe a little bit of research behind that might better inform the council.
Yeah, I think, anybody object? Let's go ahead and move forward. Okay, thank you, Chief.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, as LJ mentioned, Rick Lowman, the city's traffic engineer, is going to come and brief council about the city's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. This one is just informational, it'll be a quick briefing, just to kind of update council on the different phases with the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for having me. This is an informational presentation. Mayor, Dr. Moe, and Council. Happy to be here. I'm going to talk about our Neighborhood Traffic Calming Policy. It's a, it's a very important program for the city, because it does affect, you know, residential neighborhoods throughout the city of Virginia Beach. You all get phone calls, and you all get emails, weekly, monthly, sometimes daily, about, you know, traffic issues within neighborhoods, and people feel very strongly about their neighborhoods and the problems that they face in their neighborhoods. So it makes this program that much more important. And again, you got, you all do support this through a, through a capital improvement program with annual funding to help, you know, fund this program. So I'm going to talk about the history of traffic calming in Virginia Beach, the program itself and the four steps, or the four phases of the program. I'm going to talk about the status of the streets that are, that are in the program, and I'm going to give some examples of, of basically after-studies, after we've implemented some of these physical traffic calming devices in the neighborhoods. So the traffic calm program, thank you, LJ. It first kind of started in Virginia Beach in 1998. It was an informal program. It, you know, we took a look at certain streets where there were complaints. I wasn't around the city in 1998, but looking back to the records, it, down to 2004, well, in 2001, we kind of developed the first program, and we based it off the VDOT program. VDOT already had a fledgling, you know, traffic calming program up and running, so we just kind of based ours off of theirs. I mean, we've kind of diverged over the years, but, but the basics are the same. In 2004, you all passed, the City Council passed an ordinance to allow $200 fines. Again, the city, the state legislature gave this to, to the cities and said you can, you know, you can adopt $200 fines for speeding in traffic calming neighborhoods, and you all adopted that ordinance back in, in 2004. In 2016, we saw that we weren't getting traffic calming neighborhoods to the final phase, which was the physical devices. So we kind of revamped the program to, to move that along. In 2017, the city manager authorized some demonstration streets for us to put in some physical devices, and these were the first in the city as far as speed tables, which are, you know, like speed bumps, but they're more gradual. He authorized them for Lord Dunmore Drive, Sullivan Boulevard, Lavender Lane, and Croatan Road. So no petition was required, we just kind of put these in. Croatan Road never made it to the actual implementation because of some, some issues with the placement, and one table on Sullivan Boulevard had to be removed because the homeowners did not like it at all. It creates a lot, these things create noise when you implement them, and the homeowners did not like the placement at all, so one was removed, but one was left. So in 2019, we installed the first speed tables by petition, and we'll get to, that's Phase Four of the Traffic Calm Program. And in 2020, we, we put everything together and said we need to make this a policy, because some neighborhoods were challenging it as far as you didn't say this, or you didn't say that. And so we, we wanted to formalize this policy to make sure that we're doing everything right, and consistent, consistency is important with this program. And in 2021, we, we implemented our first Phase Four device, physical devices that didn't include vertical devices. These were, this was in, they're on Mediterranean Avenue. We did chicanes and some bulbous, and we'll explain those later as well. So it didn't involve, you know, vertical devices, because there were too many driveways on Mediterranean Avenue, and too many homes close to the road where the speed really would have impacted the residents, where the noise would have impacted the residents. So I do want to recognize two people from my staff who have worked on this. You know, I'm the city traffic engineer, so I have a lot of things that I work on, but Valerie Henshaw, who runs the, the safety section in traffic engineering, Valerie works on this, on this program daily. And Brian Proctor, who's an engineer in my section, Brian, Brian does, you know, he's on the day-to-day basis for phone calls, you know, meeting with civic leagues. He's the front line. When you all get a phone call or an email, it goes to Brian Proctor, and Brian, you know, takes care of all this. So I do want to thank them for their work on this. I get involved when, when I need to, hopefully it's not that much, but I do want to recognize them. So our Traffic Calming Policy, as I mentioned, we formalized this in 2020. It was signed by the Public Works Director. I believe that you all have a copy of that there with you. So what I'm going to explain coming up about the, about Traffic Calming Program, it's all spelled out in the policy. Again, for consistency, to make sure we're doing everything right by, by each neighborhood that we deal with. We also have a brochure that we came up with, and basically, this has frequently asked questions. It has a breakdown of the policy in bite-sized pieces for the, for the residents. So if, you know, if we do get a email or a phone call, we can go ahead and send this out to the, to the residents that requested it, so they can see, you know, kind of what the, what the procedure is for getting traffic calming in there. We often get phone calls, and I know you all do too, where, you know, we need speed bumps in our neighborhood. Well, you've got a long way to go before you get to speed bumps. We need to, you know, go through each of these steps. So this brochure kind of spells out exactly what needs to happen, and what kind of neighborhood support you have to get. So this is a very good tool for us, and this falls under the education piece that LJ was talking about. All right, so our Traffic Calming Program, it's pretty simple. We want to reduce speeds on residential streets. In doing that, we will minimize the non-neighborhood traffic. Some neighborhoods have cut-through streets. By reducing the speeds, you send the cars elsewhere. You send it to higher-speed roadways where they're meant to go. That's the goal. And then, through it all, we hope to improve neighborhood quality of life for all the residents. Like I said, this is a very important program, this is a high-profile program, and we're happy here to talk, today to talk to you about it, and just kind of go through the details so you all know exactly what has to happen. Okay, Traffic Calming Criteria. This is just to be brought into the program into Phase One. The streets have to have a posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour or less. We don't have any streets under 25 miles an hour yet in the city. I'm sure you all have heard a lot about that, and that's a subject for another day. But the street has to be predominantly residential, with residences facing the street, not reverse frontage, where, you know, the houses kind of come off, the driveways come off the back of the streets. There has to be at least 12 dwellings fronting the street per 1,000 feet, and this is just to make sure that, you know, there's, there was real issues there. And then, the average daily traffic has to be at least 600 vehicles per day, and, and it has to be less than 5,000 vehicles a day. If you're over 5,000 vehicles a day, you're more like a collector street, and you get treated a little differently. We'll still consider you for some improvements, but it's not going to be your friendly neighborhood traffic calming program that, that we deal with. And if you're under 600 vehicles a day, and you still have traffic issues, you know, there are some other things that we could do, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. So we do, we do speed studies, you know, we put the tubes down in the middle of the street, and we monitor speeds for 48 hours. And basically, to qualify for the program, you have to have an 85th percentile speed of at least 33 miles per hour. So the 85th percentile speed is a kind of a nationally recognized traffic engineering criteria, where 85% of the drivers are driving that speed or less. It recognizes that 85% of the drivers are conscientious drivers, and the other 15 we can't speak, you know, we can't speak to. That's really going to be the police's problem, because you just can't slow them down, or they're not reasonable. So the 85th percentile speed is a good point there where we can, you know, design to, or prepare for. It also, streets could also qualify if there's an average speed of less than, or at least 29 miles an hour, but we don't usually qualify based on that. It's usually the 85th percentile speed. And only one street per neighborhood. We have limited resources and limited funding, so we kind of do have to concentrate on one street per neighborhood. The only differences are large neighborhoods. King's Grant has two streets in the neighborhood, in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and Aragona Village has two streets in the Traffic Calming Program as well. Okay, we'll run through each of these four phases, and important to note is that the streets have to progress one phase at a time to get to Phase Four, and some don't make it to Phase Four, thankfully, because we solve it in Phase Two and Three. Okay, Phase One, Community Contact and Education. When a civic organization makes a request to us, or a citizen, we make sure that we can get the civic organization to back them. If there is no civic league or homeowners association, it requires five signatures from people living on that street or within that neighborhood. We'll do speed studies, like I talked about. If it qualifies, you know, based on this 85th percentile speed, then it will move it to Phase Two. If it's disqualified, you know, if it doesn't meet the speed needs, we still work with the community, they've still got our brochure, and, and we do give them the option of, of getting a speed trailer set up in their neighborhood, usually for two weeks, one, you know, a week in one direction and a week in the other direction. And that's helpful for reminding the drivers that, you know, what their speeds are, and that they are speeding in the neighborhood, and the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. So those are important tools that we have, and those are funded through the Traffic Calming Program. I think we have three of those devices, and the police have at least two that they could deploy as well. Okay, this is, I'll roll through this quickly, but this is just an example of the traffic, you know, data collection that we have. It kind of puts, it puts all the drivers into different bins by five miles an hour, and it kind of develops the 85th percentile speed for us. But I know you all get a lot of phone calls of, you know, hey, there were speeders on my street, somebody was going 55 miles an hour. Well, occasionally, you know, we do get cars that are going 55, but they're very few and very far between. You know, but this tells us what 85% of the drivers are, are driving or less. So, and in this case, you know, the example shows that the 85th percentile speed was 30 miles an hour, so this street wouldn't, you know, make our Traffic Calming Program. Here's the speed trailer. I'm sure you all have seen this throughout the city. We only, we only put ours on 25 mile an hour streets. They're not crash-tested, or they're not crash-worthy, so we tend to try to put them off the roadway, and I know the police do as well, and we work with them on locations, off the shoulders, or behind the curb, or somewhere. So these are very important tools that both, you know, traffic engineering and the police have, and we move them every week. Okay, Phase Two is selective police enforcement. Like the chief talked about, you know, there's money available to the police to, to, to do selective enforcement on special streets and in special areas. So if a street makes it to Phase Two, we'll schedule them for enforcement, generally four targets per month, four periods per month, and we do this in the spring and in the fall. Valerie does the schedules for all this, to make sure every street gets coverage, and the police provide us with input based on, you know, the information that they collect, how many hours they worked, how many tickets, how many citations they gave. So, and basically, they could write these tickets, and, and when the signs are up, you've seen the signs that says $200 additional fine. That's, that's a good amount of money for people to pay, and that's in Phase Three. But they're in selective enforcement, you know, they just basically, they have a presence out there, and hopefully that slides, slows drivers down. After, you know, two periods of selective enforcement, we'll go ahead and, go ahead and retest the street. We'll recollect speed data. If the street still exceeds 33 miles an hour, then we move to Phase Three. If it doesn't, we keep it in Phase Two, you know, and we, we monitor it for a while, and we'll send it back to Phase One and monitor it for a little bit longer. But if it does go to Phase Three, that's when we get to put the $200 fine signs up, and this is by petition. So we'll talk about by petition. It requires 75% of the street to approve the designation of the street as $200 fines. Some neighborhoods can't get the signatures, because it's the residents themselves that are getting the speeding tickets, and they don't want to pay the $200 extra. So, so these are, again, required to be approved by 75% of the property owners, and it's approved by City Council. You all approve it and put it into the ordinance. It's ordinance in Section 21-230, and we bring these to you, you know, two or three times a year to bring a couple streets into the program. We put the signs up, and then the police can write these tickets and give out, you know, the $200 fines. It's interesting, interesting to note, then, in the fall of 22, 2022, we did kind of summarize all this information, and 37% of the tickets that the police wrote in these selective enforcement went to residents of the neighborhood. So I'll point out that on Jack Frost Road, 0% went to residents, they were all kind of cut-through. But Councilman Taylor, I'll let you know that 67% of the tickets given out on King's Grant Road in our neighborhood, okay, 67% went to residents. So you don't see a whole lot of cut-through traffic on King's Grant Road, but, but there's a lot of residents that live off that street that, that use it. So it's, it's not just cut-through traffic, it's residents, you know, it's residents of the streets that don't pay attention, or they drive the street every day and you don't pay attention to what your speed is, but they cause these issues as well. Okay, so we'll, we'll put those signs up, and a year later, we'll, we'll do another speed study to determine if the signs have brought the speeds into compliance. If they're in compliance, we'll keep them in Phase Three, we'll keep studying them to make sure that they're in compliance, and we'll keep them in the program. If, if the speeds are still above 33 miles an hour, then we'll move it to Phase Four. And again, this is another petition process. 75% of the affected areas have to approve, but we basically work with the neighborhoods to develop a plan for that street. Sometimes it includes the speed tables, other times it's going to include, you know, non-vertical deflection methods like mini roundabouts, or chicanes, or bulbous. So these are all tools that we have in our toolbox, and sometimes it's just physical, it's just traffic pavement markings that can slow traffic. like mini roundabouts or chicanes or bulbous. So these are all tools that we have in our toolbox. And sometimes it's just physical, it's just traffic pavement markings that can slow traffic. So we have all these in the toolbox. We work with the neighborhoods to develop the plan. Once they give us the, the go-ahead, we, we, we put these out into the field on a temporary basis. We'll use temporary speed tables so that we don't put these down and a year later come back and find out the residents don't like them. So, you know, in the picture here, we show one of the speed tables. I can't tell you what neighborhood that is. Could be Lord Dunmore, but, 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 you know, that's an example of a speed table. We also work with emergency services to make sure that these speed tables and whatever we do in these neighborhoods don't significantly affect response times for emergency services. So there are some other ways that we could do things if, you know, if they do say, nope, we can't live with these on this street. All right. So we'll talk about the petition process because sometimes it gets bogged down in, okay, we get, we get bogged down in this. We require signatures. We, we don't use an online petition process. We've talked with the city attorney's office. It's not, you can't, you can't really, you know, use that to, and get, you know, get good compliance or legal compliance. So you could see the process there. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask. Moving on, just wanted to go through some of the streets so you could see kind of the, the volume of the streets that we have in the program. Here's phase one. These are streets that are still being studied. They were in phase two, but they were in compliance. So we send it back down to phase one. If after three years, you know, they're still under 32 miles an hour, then we'll just drop them from the program, and the neighborhood's welcome to bring another street into the program. You can see there's a couple of streets in there, and we still do speed studies on all these streets annually. Here's phase two. This is for selective police enforcement. So on a couple of these, we have petitions out for them to move into phase three because they've met their year in the program. Aragona Boulevard, we're still waiting on the petition from that street. Bay Colony Drive, we're still waiting on the petition for, from that street with the signatures. And Sullivan Boulevard, we're still waiting on that street as well. But you can see the speeds over there. They're, they're in the, you know, 33 and a half to, or actually, one's 35 on Buffane. But, you know, they're, they're 35 down to 32 miles an hour. So there is a documented issue with these streets. So here's phase three. These are the, these are the neighborhoods where the, where the $200 fines have been implemented. And you could see that these speeds are still pretty high. You know, you've got 34 miles an hour down to 32 miles an hour. And Broad Bay Road, we're about to give them petition for, for phase four. There's a couple of these that are on the cusp of going into phase four. Kings Grant Road still has to wait a little bit longer before they can even petition to go into phase four. But phase four is where, you know, a lot of our streets rest. And Croatan Road just entered phase four. We just put three speed tables down on Croatan Road. Hopefully, we haven't gotten too many complaints out there about these speed tables. But Lord Dunmore has two speed tables, and there's a petition out for them to have two more. But, but on some of these, you could see the speeds have come down based on the devices that we've put out there. And we'll detail that, some examples of some of our success stories here in a minute. You know, Croatan Road's still at 32. We just put those down, so we haven't had a chance to get the after data yet. So here's some examples of results. Lord Dunmore Drive, these were put in in 2017. You could see that when we started, the speeds, the speeds really weren't at a critical level. The volumes were at a critical level, and they'd been in the program so long that the city manager at the time said, let's put the speed tables on Lord Dunmore Drive. And you could see that the speeds came down. We're at 28 and a half, which by all standards is a good, you know, it's a, it's a good speed in a neighborhood. But the big thing on Lord Dunmore were the, were the volume of vehicles. We started at, you know, we started at close to 6,000 vehicles a day on that road. And with our latest count, you know, we're down to 3,700 vehicles a day, which is an improvement in the quality of life for those residents. And, and you could see that the speeds have continued to be, to be lower. So this is just a graph. This is one of my favorite graphs because it does show how the volumes have changed on Lord Dunmore through the years. You could see when the speed tables went in, the volume started to drop, and they've continued to drop. And, you know, post-COVID, they're at levels that, you know, below 4,000, which is fantastic. You know, for a neighborhood collector's street. It is different than just a regular residential street because it is a neighborhood collector, and it's such a large neighborhood. So Indian Hill Road, this is an area off of Shore Drive in the, in the Bayfront area. We saw a four and a half mile per hour reduction with the implementation of speed tables. That's a success. Mediterranean Avenue. Mediterranean is an interesting case study because we're moving into final design. They've been through this for a year. We've seen good results. Now we're moving into final design on this. So we're taking, we're going to take up the, the, you know, kind of these mini roundabouts that are the flex posts and the bulbous, which are the white flex posts. We're going to take those out and turn those into landscaped islands. You know, we're going to turn this into something that they want to see on a permanent basis. And we have seen good success there. We've seen between 12th and 14th Streets, we've seen a reduction of almost six miles an hour per vehicle off that, that speed that we, we showed you earlier. So that is a success story. And while we talk about these, it's important to note that we don't do the speed studies right there at the traffic calming devices. We do them between devices. If you take them actually at the devices, the speeds are going to be much, much lower, especially with the speed tables. You can't go 28 miles an hour over a speed table. If you do, you're going to be taking your car in because they do jar the car even though they are a little bit more forgiving than a speed bump or a speed hump or a speed lump. So, anyway. Sullivan Boulevard is the last one. Sullivan Boulevard, we implemented, we've got one speed table out there. We've got a mini roundabout, and we've got some kind of bulbous there. And we've seen a 3.2 mile an hour reduction. That had a, a pretty good speed of 35 mile, an 85th percentile speed of 35 miles an hour. We've brought it down to, you know, in compliance at 32, and, and we may have to go out there and put some more devices in to get that speed even lower as we go through this trial period. So, all right. With that, I've explained a lot. Any questions?
Any question? Rocky, District One.
First of all, let me say thank you for this presentation, LJ, Rick. And Chief, let me say thanks to your folks because every time I call for a speed trailer, they're on it. They get it on one of our streets and do a great job. And Rick, listen, we've talked about this at nauseam, and, and Mr. Manager, nobody earns more comp time than him because he's at every civic league talking about traffic calming. But if you could go back to slide 20 for me. So as we look at slide 20, and, and just walk me through this because I, I don't, I don't know if I quite understand, but phase one, we have, if you look at the speed limits on the right-hand column, there's two of them that are in the 20s. There's Hilbert Street and there's Red Mule. All right, now if you go to slide 21, we look again, this is phase two, and we don't have any, there's none of those on the right-hand column in the 20s.
Right.
All of those streets are in the 30s. And then when we go to the next slide, which is phase three, again, we look at phase three, and none of those numbers are in the 20s.
Correct.
But as you get to phase four, the eight or nine streets that are there, all of those are in the 20s. So my question is, the data shows that these devices work.
Yes, sir.
And so my question is, is what is the timetable to get from phase one to phase four? Is it code-driven? Is it, is it ordinance-driven? What, if we know something works in the neighborhoods, what takes us so long to get where it works? If you can answer that.
I can, and if LJ wants to jump in here, hopefully I won't say too much. But some of it, it's not code-driven, but we do like to test these out in the field. You know, like with Lord Dunmore, we saw a gradual decrease in, in traffic volumes. With, with some of these, it just happens instantaneously because it has to, you know, as far as the volumes. But some of it is the petition, some of it is the neighborhood process because this is all in the neighborhoods. You know, we don't get involved in the petition process. We'll verify the signatures, and we'll give them the petitions to give out to their neighbors, and we'll give them the rules. But in some of these cases, you know, they just can't agree to get the signatures. And, you know, during COVID, it was especially tough because nobody's going to go door-to-door and answer the door. You can email, if, if the civic organization has the email addresses, they can email it to them, sign it, and they can email it back. We take, you know, we take multiple sheets. As long as they're given to us with original signatures, it can't be an online signature. So that, that's some of it. We certainly could.
Sure.
Offer, I think to your question, Councilman, is why? Why don't we just jump to phase four? Right? And, and the reason we don't is because it's not the right tool all the time. And we don't like to put the wrong tool in the right place. And you heard me talk about that as it relates to traffic signals and changing speed limits. Rick and I, we're engineers. Rick's more of an engineer than I am. I get to stand up here and talk to you all the time, and I'm losing my engineer basics. But Rick, Rick follows the rules. He's a rule-maker, a rule follower. And, and what the rules tell us in terms of traffic safety is that you do minimalist, you do minimalist measures. You don't jump to the hammer when, when you could have used something a little bit softer. And so we don't jump straight to the speed tables because in all honesty, sometimes that's just too much. And really, when you put a speed table in, it, it does take an effect on people's cars. It does increase the amount of noise right near the speed table. It, it does add some other elements to the community that not everybody likes. And so if we could, if we can solve that with, you know, just reminding people, hey, slow down, or with enhanced enforcement of the police department, we can certainly come back and talk about whether it needs to be a whole year between each phase. But our policy is established the way that it is. Again, Rick mentioned that, so that we have fairness amongst every, every neighborhood and every district. And that's to the heart of your question. That's why we do it the way we do it.
Okay, and, and I understand, but the, and, and thank you, LJ. And I think we do need to figure out if the timeframe is too long because the numbers speak for themselves that when you, when you're in phase four, obviously, there's only two streets that are at 32 miles an hour. All the rest are in the 20s. So they are effective devices, whatever we're putting out there. And I guess my question is, getting from here to there, how do we, how do we get that? And I, and I do understand what you're saying. And I tell you, when the special master out in California made districts for Virginia Beach, and he, and he drew a line, he drew a line right down the middle of Lord Dunmore Drive, and he said, Councilmember Berluci, you have the left. Councilmember Holcomb, you have the right. And so you guys unfortunately probably hear about Lord Dunmore from us the most with their traffic calming. But we certainly do have a, an issue there where, and I think Dr. Ross Hammond had it. So she, so she knows. And so when we hear, when we hear from the residents, I don't know if they're data-driven, but I do know that the residents live there on the street, and they see things that our data doesn't see or doesn't show. And one of them is reference the, the stop signs. They want four-way stop signs. They want twisted stop signs. They want yield signs. I've heard all types of things. And so I don't know if something as simple as that on, just say, for example, a Lord Dunmore. I know you guys have been asked that a thousand times.
You know, Lord Dunmore, we've shown that the speed tables have reduced the speed. You know, there have been a couple of crashes there at the, at Lord Dunmore in Fairfield at the stop signs. And in our frequently asked questions there in the traffic calming brochure, it, it states that we do not use stop signs for speed control. Stop signs are not traffic calming devices. If there's one thing that you all can remember from our presentation today, besides the traffic signals, don't solve everything, it is that stop signs are not traffic calming devices. They're supposed to be respected. And in both of those crashes, and we heard that there was a third in May that was never reported to the police, in all three of those crashes at that intersection, it was because someone on Lord Dunmore didn't stop at the stop sign. Lord Dunmore carries 4,000 cars a day. Fairfield carries nowhere near 4,000 cars a day. Sometime in the 1990s, someone took it upon themselves in the city to politically shift the stop signs to Lord Dunmore from the side streets. So now Lord Dunmore has to stop. It was their attempt to slow traffic. A four-way stop sign would do the same thing. It would attempt to slow traffic, but it encourages discontent or contempt for the stop signs. It encourages people not to stop at them because they know nobody's coming on the side streets. So that's what's happening on Lord Dunmore. People on Lord Dunmore know that there's nobody coming on Fairfield or traffic on Fairfield is light, and they don't stop sometimes. Sometimes intentionally, sometimes unintentionally. But that's the main street there, and that's what the cause of those three crashes was. So we've shown that our speed, the speed tables and the other traffic calming, that's done its job on Lord Dunmore. And volumes are down and speeds are down.
Well, we, we definitely understand. We hear you, Councilman.
If I could, and just to, just to my fellow members of council, we just had a big issue with a, a project over in Kemp's River. And the citizens weren't, they weren't against the development of Kemp's River. They understood that the, the multi-use housing would be very successful there in that area. But time and time again, we heard from the residents that it created more traffic through these cut-through streets over in Acredale, over in Homestead, back in Bow 4 Drive and Lord Dunmore. So that was their concern. So as a body moving forward, we're going to have to address these as we run out of places to build and places to develop, and we do find more places to put in mixed-use properties. This is going to come up through the neighborhood. So I think it's something that we as council certainly need to work with traffic engineering on to make sure that we, we have some solutions for this moving forward. And, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Michael, and then Chris.
Thank you. First of all, I want to just offer my compliments to Councilmember Holcomb for his leadership on this issue. He's been a very strong advocate for traffic safety and particularly within our neighborhoods from day one. And he really was the driver, maybe pun intended, in bringing this issue to the forefront and discussion. The next, I want to say I agree with what he said. And then I also want to just let you gentlemen and your colleagues know how much respect I have for the work that you do and for your expertise and your training. I'm saying that because the next thing I'm going to say is going to be a little tough, maybe. Gentlemen, we have a problem on Lord Dunmore. You have heard from Councilmember Holcomb. You have heard from Councilmember Dr. Ross Hammond. You're hearing from me that, and the reason you're hearing from the three of us and others is because the people who live in the Fairfield neighborhood are repeatedly and continuously telling us about the traffic dangers on Lord Dunmore. I was just at a picnic last night when a neighbor seized upon the opportunity to request four-way stop signs. I recognize that that may not be the issue. I mean, that may not be the solution. It may not be the proper way to address it. I recognize that according to the technical analysis of the traffic calming program, that it may not technically qualify. But I'm respectfully asking you to create a response that we can present to the neighbors that will address the concerns they are continuously raising to us. I, I, I understand the need for the technical approach to a traffic calming, and I, and I think that's fair, and I think it's equitable. But I also think there's room for flexibility in problem-solving and responsiveness to government. If you, if not, when I say you, I mean, if, if we cannot address this issue, then you're going to be talking to three new council members who are telling you the same thing. And we can't, we can't, we, that's not the best-case scenario for our community. And I, and I hope that we can. And I'm not sitting here saying this because I think you're not doing anything. I've been, I've been to the civic league meeting. Mr. Loman did an outstanding job presenting to those folks. But they're very serious about this. And it's not one, it's not three. It's many residents who live in that neighborhood who are telling us they're fearful for their safety, the safety of their children, and for the safety of pedestrians and vehicles along that road.
Understood, Councilman. We'll, we'll meet with you and discuss what, what potential options are moving forward. And we'll have a discussion with the city manager after we, after we do so.
Great, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. LJ, Rick, thank you. This presentation's very informative. I learned a lot of new information, specifically this brochure. And so for District Eight and the other residents that are emailing us, just got another email. It's, you know, instead of forwarding them to our constituency team, now I can point them towards this, the process, what it looks like because I've, we've had three town halls in Nate, in District Eight. And LJ heard me say, you know, we're going to be pulling over your children, your grandchildren. And so we don't want to get to phase two, and then we can't get 20% signatures. So for the residents out there, where can they find this brochure? Is this in a printable format? Is this in a printable format at the library? Is it only online?
It is online on the Public Works website in Traffic Engineering. You know, we can look to, to put it at libraries, you know, city facilities, if you'd like us to. It's, you know, we could, you know, make as many copies and just distribute them to the rec centers or the libraries if you'd like us to. When we go to civic organization meetings, we do bring a handful of these with us because it's a question that we get a lot. It's a question that you get a lot. But the brochure is a good way to introduce them to the program and to let them know the next steps that they need to take.
Even maybe for like town halls, because it's just so easy to walk them through that process versus trying to go through an email chain. This is very simple.
Sure. We could, we could make copies and have them deliver it to each of the council members so that when you do go to, to meetings, you'll have them available to you.
Thank you.
It is online.
Web link.
Yeah. Web link.
Okay. Anybody else at this point have standing work, gentlemen?
We appreciate you.
Hey, moving on.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Assistant City Manager Monica Shapiro and Budget Director Kevin Chatelier will give council an overview on the spaces used by our voter registrar and some of the issues they've been seeing due to the impact of increased election activity and their need for new spaces.
Welcome, Monica.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present our work that we've been doing on this presentation. You will hear as part of the formal presentation from me as well as our Budget and Management Services Director, Kevin Chatelier. But because I think this is a presentation where it's important that you're aware of the different perspectives, roles, and responsibilities that have gone into this work, I really want to introduce my colleagues who've contributed to this. We have Daryl Henderson, who joined us at the perfect time of this project. Daryl serves as the senior architect for the city, and he's really challenged us to think more strategically about options. We have Tim Copeland, who serves as the real estate agent for the city, who's helped us not become victim to analysis by paralysis, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Hunter's here. Here we go. Hunter is the budget analyst for the voter registrar. So those are my colleagues on the manager's side who's worked, who have worked on this. And then our communities of interest stakeholders have also contributed. We have Tina Sinan, who is the clerk of court. We have the voter registrar, Christine Lewis. Al is the vice chair of the electoral board. I'm not going to butcher your last name, Al, so I'm just going to call you Al. We have, Abolrich. Deputy Voter Registrar, Christian Logan. So lots of work have gone, has gone into this presentation. The structure of this is to really give you high-level context of why, why are we here? Walk you through some of the current spaces that we are using for election operations. Walk you through some options, should you want to consider a different path. And then Kevin will walk you all through some of the budget considerations. I feel like that's pretty much the good context. This is one of those projects where you can take so many different paths. Analysis paralysis is something that's real. I just remembered, I want to acknowledge the city auditor. Is Lyndon here? Lyndon, because I'm going to reference his work in the presentation, too. So he's also contributed to this work and our thought processes. Wanted to start with the ask up front. So as you're hearing us speak, you can have some type of feeling of what we're going to be asking at the end. I'll go through this in a bit more detail in a couple of slides. But essentially, election operations is taking place in a lot of different locations. The manager gave us a directive to work with the stakeholders to make sure that we can make these sites, these various sites, safe and secure for the important work that they do. I think we all can agree that voting is perhaps one of the most dear rights we hold in a democracy. So making sure that our stakeholders can offer the citizens of Virginia Beach a safe and secure election has been top priority for us. With that said, in full transparency, it is becoming more and more difficult to accommodate their, their needs. As I walk you through their, these spaces, most of these spaces have other primary functions. And whenever they are under the custody of the voter registrar or the clerk of court, we are not allowed to have access to them. There's a really sophisticated chain of custody that takes place with completed ballots. One I wish more people knew about, it would, I think, give people lots of confidence in the fine folks that we have running our elections for Virginia Beach. We have done some security enhancements. We won't talk about them in great detail, but we've worked with the Office of Emergency Management to install cameras in many of the places where we have temporary vaults. You're going to hear me probably on every slide mention a temporary vault. We've added cameras to try to help with the security of those. You will also hear me talk about some changes in state laws that have impacted operations. Not weighing in on whether those changes are good or bad. I'm a public administrator. I'm just commenting that those changes have had impacts on the operations. It has extensively impacted how long the activities are pre and post-election. So I feel like that's enough of a context. Building 14 really serves as the central nerve for the election operations. Building 14 is shared by the Office of Voter Registrar as well as our Agriculture Department. Voter Registrar takes up the bottom half of the building, which is about 14,000 square feet. So the administrative staff for Christine is there, 14 FTEs as of this fiscal year, as well as early voting. And early voting has had a pretty significant change. It went from seven days before an election to being 45 days before election. And when we look at the numbers from this past election in November, more than 19,000 people early voted at Building 14. So they were seeing about 530 people per day. I'm sure most of you have seen this space and what that space really looks like. We have some pictures. They kind of divide this narrow hall into half. The first half is where they check folks in, see where you live, see what ballot you need. And on the other half is where people actually early vote. Not sure if a wheelchair could fit through there. Maybe it could, maybe it couldn't. But as you can see, it's a pretty tight space. And then getting people to wait in line to be served, they can hold about seven or so Then upstairs is where our Agriculture Department, that's their space, but they do share it for some of the elections operations. So the electoral board has, they have public meetings. The interest in all things elections has increased quite a bit. So these are public meetings where people attend. Of note, during presidential election years, they're, they turned this space into a call center. So we'll have to find another place for them to have these electoral board meetings because presidential elections obviously are a big deal, and they'll use this space for a call center. So that's Building 14. Building 23, which is the former schoolhouse, is across the street on North Landing. This is where absentee ballot takes place. Back in 2020, there was a state law that changed, you no longer need an excuse to vote by mail. And as you can see from the graph at the bottom, it's becoming more and more of a popular way that people vote, more than 20,000 absentee mail-in ballots. So what happens is that has to all be processed, and then those need to be stored in a secured place. So we're talking a high-volume amount of paper. So this space works best for the elections operations. So they take over this space. This space's day job, or its primary function, is our training center for human resources. So safety training, most notably our CDL training. CDL training has to take place in a certified location adjacent to a certified driving pad. Building 23 is our certified space. So for the November 2023 election and March 2024 elections, the voter registrar will take over this space beginning September 5th, and will have it through March 15. So that alone impacts 25 classes that we will either have to hopefully find another location for, reschedule, or cancel. CDL training is obviously one that's always at the top of our mind because it's some of our most front-facing work, sanitation workers, public utilities workers. So it's one where we really will need to find a permanent solution if we continue with this practice. So the mail-in process starts 40 days before an election and doesn't end until seven days after an election. So it's a pretty lengthy process. We've turned a space, we have not shown it in the picture, but we've shown a space, we turned a space into a temporary vault and added cameras that the voter registrar and deputy registrars can watch from their offices as one of the security enhancements. Then there is Building 19. I'm sure most of you have been over at Building 19. This is where they take, they do the canvas at the night of an election. They return their materials there. So for a citywide election, it's 108 precincts will come here, and then for the next seven days, they do the canvassing of election. We have turned a space into a temporary vault that's stored there, and they remain there until the results are certified. So while this is under the custody of the voter registrar and until Clerk of Court, Tina Sinan, takes custody, we are not allowed in this space. This space's primary job, its day job, is another training center. It's where we hold new member orientation as well as other HR spaces. Convention Center, being able to do proper training for the hundreds of folks who work on Election Day, hands-on training is just really important because these are the boots on the ground that makes sure our citizens have really good experiences on Election Day. So making sure that they have enough space to train with the devices that they will use is important. So the Convention Center has been accommodating the voter registrar's requests for space. This is a picture of one of their trainings, 138 officials. They do 13 trainings, three-hour-long, and they did this across five days. So the Convention Center has been accommodating their requests to use the space. And then lastly, there is Central Drive. That's where the election machines themselves are stored. We also have an official vault there. No pictures of that space, obviously, but those are the various spaces that they are currently using to serve the citizens of Virginia Beach. Our city auditor in the spring released not an audit, a review. He did a review on elections, and one of the findings, findings number two, I'm not going to read this to you, but some key takeaways was that the city auditor's office found that, that the space was inadequate for efficient operations, and they observed that there were difficulties that could have been avoided in that election that they observed if they had one large office. So if you have any more questions about that, the auditor can speak to that. But they did a review, and they found the space to be inadequate for efficient operations. So one of the things we wanted to do is get a better understanding of what our peers, what are they doing? How do they operate? So we did a couple of field trips, reached out to some of Christine's peers, and what we found is, one, we don't really have a lot of peers. Not that we're in a class of our own, but we kind of are. We are kind of like District 1. We're in a class of our own. We have lots of registered voters, precincts. What we found is Norfolk, they're similar to us. They're operating out of various different sites, but their central nerve, which would be akin, our Building 14 is rather nice. They just moved into a different space. That's probably maybe about twice as large, maybe not. I'm not good with square feet. It's really nice. But the other peers, they're under one consolidated space, one roof. So I don't know if that, hopefully that's helpful. So we really wanted to explore the needs with our stakeholders, but do it in a very objective way. So we used a consultant that helped really document what their operations were and then assigned space needs to that. We wanted to be really thoughtful about space needs and not just coming up with a number. So we went through that exercise that was painful at times, but really helpful. Then something else we wanted to do was test the lease market to see what could our community, what could the real estate market offer to potentially meet the needs. We didn't make any promises when it came to the RFI, but we just wanted to understand what, what's in our market. And then Daryl joined the team and has really helped us think through high level about what are some other options on campus that we might have. I think it's appropriate to share what the stakeholders, desired variables is the best name that we can come up with, are when they think about the space options, should we want to look at something different? Being close to the municipal complex is really important. When you learn their operations, you, you kind of understand why that's a pretty big consideration. Being near a bus line, you want to make sure that voting is accessible to as many people as possible. And obviously, they want to be in as much of a consolidated space as possible. So this is one of so many paths. I like to use Kevin's words. We were in one of the meetings, and there's like, there's so many paths that we could take, but at some point, we have to put the pencil down and engage you all in a conversation. And what we're really hoping from this conversation is that we give you enough information that doesn't overwhelm you, but gives you enough data to have a conversation and kind of serve as a compass for us to let us know what path you want us to pursue more rigorously. So obviously leasing, and you'll see 50,000 square feet versus 30,000 square feet. So let me talk a little bit about that. 50,000 square feet gets all of the operations, including the voting machines in one space. 30,000 square feet, trying to remember Daryl's words because I love them, operational adjacencies, strategic operations. So it wouldn't be everything under one roof, but really a good chunk of their operations under one roof. So going to walk you through these at a very, very high level. So A, B is leasing off-campus. C is building and buying something, whether that be on-campus or out in the community. An on-campus move, and we'll talk really briefly about that, is looking at the assets we earn, we own on campus, and thinking about them in a slightly different way to see if they can meet the needs. And then E is building out Building 14, which is now 14,000 square feet, but looking to build that out to about 30,000 square feet. And obviously, we could continue operating as we currently are. So we've previously shared this with you. These are the results or the responses we got from the RFI process. We got four responses. All of them would more than meet the need or be a good use of getting us in one consolidated space. Kevin's going to talk to you about the numbers and the financial components, but all of the responses to the RFI would get us into one consolidated space. When we think about on-campus options, this is Building 14. So there are some thoughts about what would happen if we built that out and relocated agriculture. David Tremmer, if you are watching, we would talk with you to make sure that we found you a good space. And to that point, any of these options would require us to have some swing space to move people to temporarily or permanently. So this is kind of like a domino effect that would, would happen if this is a route you want to pursue. But Building 14 is something that we've had conversation about. Building 23 and 29, which is the school, and the building beside it is also a space that we've talked about. Daryl has other ideas on campus that could potentially be ideal, but we would want to talk to the partners and folks who are currently in those spaces. So if this is something that you want to pursue, we will definitely sharpen our pencil more and bring back some options. But there are options on, on, on campus. So that's really the big takeaway from this slide. Now Kevin's going to be the Debbie Downer and talk to us about money. So yeah, Kevin, it's all yours now, and he'll close us out.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. So regardless of what Monica says, I'm not going to be Debbie Downer or anything like that. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, you were setting the table, aren't you?
Yeah. It's, it's, this is just for a high-level contextual, just to provide estimates and some numbers for City Council to take into consideration any type of path or direction that they might give staff if this is a desire for them to pursue. So as Monica said, So as Monica said, working with the group, brainstorming out several of these options for consideration, there are certainly multiple paths. Daryl is, you saw the previous map on there, there's so many different options and directions that this, this could go. But one of the things that I was able to extract from the group and get their professional input on are the variables that we would need to be able to run some projected cost estimates. Again, these are high level estimates and as I'll show those on the next slide, first let me walk through a few of the variables. So in looking at lease space, Monica had said that certainly a couple of options council could consider in working with Public Works Real Estate. Reasonable estimates, $15 per square foot with a future escalating cost of 3% each year. If the options to go for construction or build out, these are the variables that we use for storage space, $20 per square foot, for renovation, $210 per square foot, and for new construction demo, $340 per square foot. Something else, one of the scenarios takes into account is potential need for site acquisition needs. So it's estimated to use $50 per square foot for that. And also being mindful of operating budget impacts, not just in the short term but the long term. We had to take into account the need for custodial maintenance and added utility costs, especially if there's an expansion of square footage or the, the building of a new facility or taking on the utilities for lease as well. That's assumed to escalate at 3% per year for the duration of the projected period. And then also something else we assumed was that for the build out and construction costs of not just for, you know, anything on campus or buying a building new, but also for leased build out space, that'd be covered through the use of bonds resulting in debt service. So with that, we assumed a four and a half percent interest rate on that. So Monica had previously mentioned and walked through these options, the A through F options here. So what the slide does is follows that same organization of the, of the considerations of options, but it just puts numbers to them, accumulative projection into the out here. So for example, following option A across the top of the screen, the lease option of 50,000 square feet in year one, including the build out as well as the lease and relocation costs, estimated to be about $1.6 million. And then the table, you can see five years out, the cumulative cost be 8.1, 10 years, 15 years, so forth and so on, out to 30 years. So the reason that this is carried out for the 30 years, as I noted, even for a lease base, there's going to be a significant build out need. Monica did a good job of talking about the need for vaults and security. And so it's not likely anything out there where it's a turnkey. There's going to need to be some build out and infrastructure and some work done to it. So we assume that to be a bondable portion of the project. So going out over time, you certainly within that, you'll see out in 30 years, you have a $51.9 million total cumulative estimated cost. So there is certainly the retirement of debt. Over that, you would at least want to keep the lease space for a minimum of 20 years to be able to pay that off. But also being that the purpose of the voter registrar is a core government function, that's just assumed to be ongoing cost in perpetuity and not necessarily something that would be able just to be picked up and relocated once established there. So you can see the first two options, being the lease option of 50,000 square feet, option B being the lease option of 30,000 square feet. You can see there's a slightly reduced cost over the projected time period. Option C being a buy and build option of 50,000 square feet. This does consider, excuse me, take into account the need for some site acquisition, but over the long run, you can see by year 30, total cumulative cost is about $33 million. The reason that that one is less than the other two options, even though you're getting a bigger footprint, you're retiring that debt after 20 years. And then without that lease payment beyond that point in time, it just, it's ultimately would be a lower cost option. Option D, as Daryl was talking about, there's so many different options with this, but we did our best to try to put a cost estimate to it. So an on-campus move to establish a 30,000 square foot facility for the voter registrar's operations, you can see that that would start off with a cost of about $600,000 a year and cumulative grow to about $18.3 million. And then option E being the renovation of the existing facility as well as adding some additional square footage to building 14 to get a total 30,000 square feet. You can see what the cumulative cost with that, for that option would be over time. Again, these are high level placeholders, just concept to be able to give city council some, some concept as to what these cost options might be. And then you can see option F there would be no change, meaning that operations would continue as is. Monica's talked about, safety procedure's been put in place to ensure the integrity of the overall voting process and ballot protection, but also felt like it was important to put on there as we don't want to lead city council or the public to think that the other five options are the only options that are out there. There's really options within options. But the divergence in terms of the path forward for city staff to evaluate these further is really the separation between is the desire to go with the lease option or for the build out, the on-campus renovation or buy-build option. So those are really kind of the two paths that we could use some direction on. At this point in time, I'm not saying that it's going to be exactly perfect, but we could certainly refine and continue to take all the input and gather information and whittle these down a little bit, hopefully going into the upcoming budget process. If this is in fact a desire for city council and a priority, the city council would like staff to further explore. So with that, oh, sorry, with that being said, I'll be glad to open it up for...
If I could just start before Barbara and just say, you know, with election integrity being such a very prominent on the national stage, we have to do something. You know, I think we may have to agree on that going forward. You know, this is, the option is that we have to do something. Okay, Barbara?
Just a question because hearing all these numbers, okay, to do everything, you need 50,000 square feet, is that it? Right, so if we use one of the 30,000 options, then we've got to have something else as well.
That's correct. We would still need to maintain a separate place for the warehouse of storing the equipment.
So really, that's misleading because the 30,000 doesn't, isn't the total. I mean, if we're looking for what's the best...
So we didn't want to make, Councilmember Henley, we didn't want to, we didn't want to make any value judgment on what you thought was best. So what we wanted to do is lay out options. If you wanted to get them as much under one roof as possible, 30,000 square feet accomplishes that. If you want to go for a gold star, lots of smiling faces out there, then 50,000 gets you that. But we as staff, we always want to give you all as many options, but 50,000 square feet gets you everything under one roof.
Put together the things that they do now at, what, four or five different places, totals to about 50,000. So you're still going to be using those spaces?
Not all of those spaces, two likely, a warehouse and another, another spot.
Okay, I was just looking, but 50,000 square feet does it all?
One-stop shop.
Josh?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Question about option E and do those figures include the incidental cost of swing space and moving people around and all of that?
So it does not, and Daryl's smiling. Because where we, wherever we purchase swing space, we have some leases retiring where folks are off campus now, who are going to be coming back to campus. So we'll be able to sharpen our pencil once you kind of point us in the right direction and get you a bigger number, a better number, but we have some things in, hopefully smaller number, smaller number. Or I don't know, it'll be a bigger number. But yeah, things in play.
To clarify that, what's going on in my set with that? Henley and I talk about this all the time, is that there, there will be some spaces as the police move back on and then Public Works move on as well and then IT and things like that, there are currently lease spaces after 531, that we got to get a better sense of what the availability and timing of those are, should council ask us to look at a renovation or on-campus move and swing space related to that.
Anyone else at this point, Amelia?
Well, having served as vice chair for the electoral board, several years ago, I know exactly what you all are talking about, the spacing, the moving things around, the crunching. And to me, having them in so many different places actually doesn't work well because there's opportunities for something to be, someone to look at. So I'm leaning more, you know, looking at that on-campus move because as you're saying, there are opportunities that can come up to do that more than completely building out, looking at that cost. But having them in one, maybe like you mentioned, one separate space, like a warehouse or what, for the majority to be housed under one roof, I think would be best for something like this. Just my opinion.
Michael?
I'm going to just make my commentary brief, not to pile on, but I just want to, since you're looking for some direction or for consensus, I think it's very important that we get this right. And I think we need to listen to the clerk of the court and the electoral, members of electoral board who are saying that they want the, they really need the larger option, the one sort of footprint in order to make sure that our elections are secure, they can do the job they need. And I don't know what exactly that looks like, but my preference, for whatever it's worth, is that we adhere to the recommendation that's provided by those professionals.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Mayor, when you go to the, the city auditor's report, it explains it all right there. I mean, he says, currently his staff is dispersed, working in four different buildings, training for election officials needed to be conducted off-site at the convention center. I, I think this sums it up to show the importance, and I agree with Dr. Ross Hammond, this, we need it under one roof and it can be controlled that way better. I'm certain the folks over at the elections office could control it better.
Yes, Josh.
Just thank you again, Mr. Mayor. One thing that strikes me is we've got these, these, both of these options for lease space. And I don't know that that really makes, I mean, just, this is my opinion, sense for us over the long haul. And especially with it expressed that this facility be either close to or on campus. I guess my question is, in that option C, this buy-build option, does that contemplate potential locations in or near campus?
So I'm going to, Daryl, as you're thinking high level, was there a spot on campus that could accommodate a 50,000 square feet? And if you need more time to answer, we'd rather be...
There's not one, one...
Yeah, could you go by the microphone?
Not that tall. There's, there's not one building that'll...
Introduce yourself as well, because you...
I'm sorry, Daryl Henderson, senior architect. There's not one building on campus that currently will house a 50,000 square foot, footprint. One of the options we showed was building 23 and 29. Collectively, building 10, I'm sorry, 20, building 29 is currently 10,000 some odd square feet. If we renovated it, we can make it 10,000, 200, 12,000 square feet. There's opportunity to better that building. It'll require one minimal move currently because there's an athletic center there. I mean, obviously, for anything that we would do on campus, there'd have to be some facilitation of moves and swings and that kind of thing. And then if we took building 23, which is around 18,000 square feet, again, multiple moves that would, that would require for swing space, but if we combined them together, we'd have, you know, approximately 30,000 square feet plus. And then because there's a, there's a CDL operation there and there's space there, we actually could build out a warehouse in that space. Do we know that that's the right location? We know it's an opportunity for us, but there'd have to be more study to ensure that this is the right location with, within campus. But we'd have to really look at the camp, we're looking at multiple options on campus to ensure that whatever we do, it's the best facility we could, best location, best facilitation, best economy, best utilization of space to ensure that whatever we do, we do it economically. And again, it meets the requirements for the registrar's office. So not one building that's going to be 50, but an opportunity to build, to build 50.
Okay, Amelia?
So what I'm hearing is the no change is not an option right now. We want some kind of a change.
So the communities of interest would tell you F is not an option. We as staff will tell you that based on what council decides to do, we're going to do everything we can to continue to make sure that we provide them with safe, secure sites, whether that's working with OEM more. But I think that goes back to bifurcating safe and secure versus efficient operations. But yes, as staff, we're going to do every, whatever this council decides to do, we're going to do whatever we can to make sure it's the safest sites possible.
At this point, can I make a suggestion? I think, you know, one of, you know, once again, you know, voting is the ultimate privilege of everybody in this country. And voting integrity is paramount. And the more sites you have, you know, the more, the challenges to that integrity are going to happen. You know, we are the largest city by population in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have to have the best possible voting system. And the thing is, would I be remiss if I suggested to council that the direction be to pursue the consolidation with 50,000 feet and then have them come back and, you know, Kevin will give us the bad news then, but, but I really think that, you know, this is something we cannot afford not to do. So would that be, does anybody object at least moving forward with the idea of consolidating with the 50,000 square foot?
And to clarify, council's not authorizing any funds right now. What you're author, you're basically telling us what council desires is we pursue our efforts towards getting them to one building to the maximum extent possible. And that could take myriad different options. It could be a build, buy option and/or a lease option as well. But what we're hearing from council is ideally, we want to work towards getting the voter registrar functions into one consolidated space to the maximum extent possible. And we'll work towards identifying those options to bring back to you all.
That'd be great. Barbara?
My thinking is that maybe say we would like to have it all consolidated here at the municipal center, even though it might be two buildings, as he said here. I'm thinking about something I think we discussed a couple of weeks ago as a possibility. Anyway, I think that could work with something, so we, I think there are options, but I think we do need to look at the overall and not settle for a portion of it.
Right. Okay.
To clarify, it sounds like one of two buildings in the municipal complex would be desired.
I think that might be the best possible option. You know, let's come back with, you know, you know, list and, but, you know, I think you know the general direction. Okay? Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to, you know, council liaison reports, anybody? Okay, we're going to take a break shortly. We're going to be, hopefully getting into, thank you. Okay, if I could just start off real quick, you know, for the last couple of days, we entertained a group from a sister city from Miyasaki, Japan, went along very successfully. And I just want to thank council members Belucci and Rouse for attending the tree planting. But once again, we will give, we will be giving a proclamation to these nice folks. And with council's permission, you know, at, when I go down to present the proclamation to the mayor of Miyasaki, I would like to have the, well, the council come down. Okay? All right. And then the other thing is, you know, Josh and I went to the third precinct, Little CAC, the other day. And, you know, Josh, if you could just address that a little bit.
That was great. It was a picnic put on by the third precinct Citizens Advisory Council or Committee. And it, it was, it was great to see our police officers, animal control, their families. They had a bounce house, a DJ, and apparently my kids are really good at hula hooping, I found out. So, but it, it is, it was really nice to see you out there, Mayor, and I know everybody really appreciated the support that they have from this council.
And if I could just, you know, caveat on that a bit, almost every police officer we spoke to really was grateful to the... we spoke to really was grateful to the entire council, you know, for, you know, the pay remedies, but also, you know, they pointed out, and it was amazing, some of the technology that they had literally on their persons and what's going on. And I would say the morale was pretty high.
Absolutely.
Okay. Amelia, and then Work.
I have a couple of things to announce. Last, on July 7th, the Walmart at Town Center had a renovation reopening. It was really nice. As you came in, they had set up a stage with four steps up and had a singer, had at least close to 100 people gathered in there. And as you know, they were opened in 2014. So it's nine years since it's been there. And some of you remember the thoughts of whether it would do well, and it has done well. They employ over 300. And they also did show their philanthropic arm. They gave $1,000 out for Special Olympics, $1,000 for One Life, and another smaller organization called African American Business Network. So it really turned out nicely. I thank them for being there and what a great job they're doing. The second thing, these are things coming up on July 12th, let's see, nope, it's July, yeah, July 12th, there's the NBC, is that right? Where they're doing a graduation at the Hines. So as you know, Jennifer and I are members there and we may show up and do a quick remarks. On the 13th, as you know, a little vote for District 4. We have in town the USA, you know, hockey team, they're going through that, but lot of their heads in beds. They're using the hotels, the Hilton Garden Inn and so, other hotels around in District 4 instead of being all the way out at the beach. Have over 2,600 nights already, and they're there for this month and it's gonna continue to grow. So we may just end up being one of those destination for sports right within our area. On the 14th, we have a graduation at Centerra, worked with the seniors at Burton Station. Had a grant that we're given as part of the VA ACC grant with Centerra and couple of areas to help improve the quality of life, nutrition, education. So 17 graduates will be coming through and one of our council members with scrimmage should be coming in, and I hope some of you'll be able to come, is you, at 12 o'clock. I'll send out the little invitation to everyone, but we're really excited about that. I think those are all that I have. Oh, no, I forgot an important thing. Community Day for District 4 on July 12th, gonna have it at the Renaissance Academy. And try to be district, you know, specific about different topics, whether it's housing, public works, public utilities, public safety, and all of those chiefs and directors, including the school board, will be coming up. So you all are invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Work?
So, Mary, that's tomorrow?
Yes. Tomorrow is our community day. And one church asked whether we're gonna have heavy food. I said, just good refreshments. Page four by Councilmember Ross Hammond.
Work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. This body, a couple of weeks ago, deferred until July 18th of this month to short-term rentals, STRs, in my district, six. The applicants, which are two brother and sister, asked that we defer these two STRs until August 15th so they can prepare to amend their application. So I'll be bringing that up on July 18th to vote again for deferral. And then second, I do have two legislative aides. One is in the audience here, Ben Green is back here. He's helping with communications and the younger side of things. And then I have a more senior aide who's not here, who was a former aide in Ventura County, California. So this council member who first was not necessarily for aides welcomes their help. Thank you.
No, there we go. Okay, Barbara?
On Thursday night, which is the 13th of July, at the Senior Resource Center, the Public Works engineers will be presenting one of our bond referendum projects, which is the marsh restoration in Back Bay. And I just, I think this is phenomenal. And I really want to thank our engineers for all of the work that they have done to get it to this point, which is just unbelievable to have it at this point, at this time. Back in the, right after the 2019 budget was adopted, that was when we had just received the Dewberry report. And I asked the council at that time if they would extend Dewberry's work a little longer to be able to look specifically at the Back Bay flooding situation, to see if there was any possibility that anything could be done, because it just seemed like it was just one of those things that's going to happen and there's nothing to do. And so that summer, we had several focus groups, actually most of them, at the Senior Resource Center. And we just took the brainstorming ideas of questions that people had as possible solutions. And Amanda was at the meetings, at those focus groups, as were then Deputy City Manager Tom Leahy and the Public Works Director at that time, Mr. Johnson. And I really appreciate all that they did. And then Dewberry actually took that, took the, those ideas and looked specifically at the four main ideas, which was a new inlet, a major pump, pumping the water out of the bay, siphons, or marsh restoration. And one of their criteria was what was something that could reasonably be done within a five to seven year period after the decision was made to go forward. And because our, I think our engineering staff had already been looking at the possibility of this marsh restoration, these marsh terraces, this was the one that they suggested that we look at. And then we were able to put that on the bond referendum question as one of the green infrastructure so that it's funded and to be moving. And when I look at within four years of something that was just appeared to be pie in the sky, to think that we're now at a point where it's ready to move forward is just amazing. And I think it really goes to the work that our staff has done to get it to this point. This year, of course, they've been doing the staging area. And because they can't do any work on Back Bay during the time of the migratory fowl habit using the bay, something like from November to March, there can't be anything done. But then just as soon as that's passed, next spring, we'll be seeing some actual work. And we've gotten, what, one $10 million grant from the federal government to add to ours because of all this work. And to think that all of this has happened within four years is phenomenal. And I just can't say thank you enough to the staff to have, have brought this forward to this point. And this is something that's done in the Gulf, but it's not been done on the East Coast. And I think this is going to really be, be something that everyone is, is gonna want to follow. And so if anybody is available at the Senior Resource Center where it all began Thursday night, come down and get this presentation, because I think it's going to really be something that, that we're all gonna be able to say, this is, this is unique. And we're, you know, when we look at what's happening in Vermont now, and I think mentioning the fact that our FEMA team is, or a part of them are headed up there to, to look at this flooding situation, you know, to think that we're actually able to be trying something, I think speaks so, so much. And I really appreciate the fact that Public Works took the fact that we had that mobile sign already in place in Punggol because of an event last weekend to announce Thursday night's meeting. That was stroke of genius. Thank you a lot. And I look forward to, to the presentation and hope some of you could come and, and hear what's there, because I think this is something we're gonna all be really wanting to follow. And I think one of our bond referendum projects is actually moving is, is great. What time? Barbara? What time? Six to eight.
Okay. Anyone else? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted briefly acknowledge and thank the members of our city staff who came to support me at my first town hall on June 28th. It was great. There were over 80 people there, I would imagine. And I just wanted to say thank you to our members of our Public Works Department, our Parks and Rec Department, our Budget Director, our schools, traffic engineering, our communications team, our City Manager's Office, and our, and our Clerk's Office for, for putting together something that, that our residents in District 9 really appreciated and valued. So thank you to everybody who made that a successful town hall.
Anyone else? Josh?
So, I'm liaison to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and yesterday the meeting was a site tour around Marshview Park. So we were in Councilmember Remick's District 6, and we were able to ride around Marshview Park. And we rode to Rudy Inlet and rode, you know, a little bit on the oceanfront. And it was my first time ever going to Marshview Park, let alone riding it and walking it. And so, and I'm from Virginia Beach, so I wanted to make that, just kind of shout that out to the public. It's incredibly beautiful park. We entered through Indian Roads. There's multiple pathways towards the park, but we entered off of Indian Road and it's, you know, dog friendly, it's kid friendly, it's mosquito friendly. And so you have got to prepare yourself if you're gonna be walking through the woods. But it's so beautiful, so make sure that you check out that asset in District 6. Good for you.
It's an asset for the entire city, though. Encourage everyone.
I was there for that. I'm there.
May I comment on Marshview? That was, that's an open space acquisition that was actually done because of the Navy offering it to us. So when we look at something that has a lot of partnerships to make it get to this point, I think it is, really speaks to, you know, to the work that we're all able to do with all of our committees. And I really look at Parks and Rec and Chad back there for everything you've done with the Open Space Committee. It's great.
Thank you.
And just to finish off, I wanna give kudos to, you know, a lot of the staff, especially at the oceanfront. It was a very successful July 4th weekend. And our lifesaving crew, I believe they rescued 180 people and there were no fatalities and everything. So after the season, there will be, as mentioned, at least a proclamation, but perhaps, you know, council resolution, you know, thanking them for their efforts. Okay? All right. Mrs. Henry, at this point, can we go into, you know, if we could do the, you know, get through the consent agenda, and then we can get into, take a break.
Yes, I have some further discussion. I thought we were stalling.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Since late March, early April, I've received more than a handful of emails. Some email, may have, as well, about yard waste, have some delays. And so while I've been out in the community, I've been trying my best to talk with some of the staff as they're out there working in. The men and women of Waste Management Division are definitely on the backbone of the city. I'm personally grateful to them for their response to the tornado touchdown in District 8 in April. And as I said, for the past few weeks, we've definitely seen a rise in complaints regarding our Waste Management service. As you know, we just had a baby, had a bunch of boxes, and they told us there was about a 14 day delay. So I've experienced it personally. But through, through just these conversations with Waste Management staff, clearly there appears to be a shortage that's leading to the delays in service. Also hearing that it's stemming from our pay and not being competitive with CDL drivers, so we're losing staff to some of our competitors. And so they're doing an incredible job, they're doing their best, and they're always willing to engage when we're out there in the city. So I wanted to ask, Mr. Manager, understanding that you, your staff may need time to address pay-related issues, can you let us know what we're doing in the interim to address these gaps in services so we can know how to best respond to the constituents?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to have LJ Hanson come and give a quick synopsis of kind of what we're, what we're handling, what we're doing right now to address the issue, and also some of the other work that we're working in the background.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, we are having some critical staff issues. Today, just for benefit of the city council, today we are down 24 drivers. That means there's 24 vacancies. We have 15 that are on light duty, meaning that they are unable to work. So that, that's a, that's a big hit. And what we are doing at this point is prioritizing the thing that we have to prioritize, and that is the black cans. So black cans, if not collected quickly and appropriately, they can cause other problems. We get disease, pestilence, that type of thing. That has to be our number one priority, and it remains to be our number one priority. So as a result of the shortage of drivers, we're pulling drivers from bulk and from yard waste to make sure that, that the black cans are being picked up on the day that they're scheduled. What that means then is that we're running a little bit short of drivers to be able to click, to collect yard and bulk collections. I would tell you, today, I met with staff this morning, they're frustrated. They, they know, they know they're getting a black eye here, and it, and it's hurting them. They don't, they don't like it, they don't enjoy it, but they can only do what they can only do. Today, all of the supervisors are in the trucks and the operations manager is in the truck. The next person in line is a deputy director of Public Works. He has a CDL sitting up there. I told him, you're next. If there's another truck, you're the one that's, that's going out. And I don't have a CDL, so the line stops there. We are, we're doing what we can do, but we are having a difficult time hiring. We just closed a recruitment. We had 44 applicants, of which only 11 had, or excuse me, only nine had CDLs, meaning that all the people applied, but they didn't meet the basic requirement, which is being able to drive the truck. We, I have no idea beyond that whether those nine are eligible to be hired, or if they actually have CDLs, or they're actually valid, or anything else. I can only tell you that of 44 applicants, only nine had CDLs. And, and that has been a source of frustration for us. We are currently working through messaging so that the community understands what we're trying to do. There's been a little bit of misunderstanding about yard waste. We have said, if you have bags of yard waste and you'd like it collected and you can fit it in your black bag, in your black container, please go ahead and put it in there, and we'll, we'll pick it up with the rest of the garbage. We're not, we're, we are not suggesting that anybody fill their black cans up with yard waste and they don't have any place to put their municipal solid waste. So we are trying to work with communities. We are working with media to reach out to the civic leagues. There's been some posts going out on our social media accounts. We are trying to, you know, to help everybody understand, and please be patient with us. But right now, we're, we're up against it. And, and I wish I could tell you that I have a way to snap my fingers and make it, make it go, but, but I don't. I need more, I need more help. And, and we're working to do what we can. We're working closely with the City Manager's Office, closely with HR, to do what we can on recruitment and retention, but that's where we stand right now. Be happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Okay, if we can get to the consent agenda.
Okay, let's look at the consent agenda. And I think the way Rosemary usually does it is that we look first at the ordinances and resolutions to see if there are any that we want to pull for further discussion, or how we want to act with them. I would just say, in looking at the minutes, we had done a lot of discussion about the, the question of, of grants to events. And I, during the discussion, there were quite a few members of the council who suggested that we defer action until we're able to come up with a policy. Is that what we want to do with three, or?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but number one and three have multiple speakers, so it will be, it will be, those will be pulled from the consent agenda.
So, which again?
Number one and number three, under ordinance and resolution.
So number one and number three will be pulled?
Number three are pulled.
Okay.
Yes. And then there's an alternate version that Dana needs to address for number... And then there's an alternate version that Dana needs to address for number six.
Six.
So we're getting the alternate draft--
It's in front of you. It should be up your seat.
Okay.
One page.
And so this will be the alternate version.
Yes, Councilmember, the, the accountants discovered a fiscal year issue, and so the alternate version corrects that issue. Otherwise, the substance is the same.
Okay, so it looks like on the consent agenda will be item two, item four, item five, item six as the alternate version, item seven, item eight, item nine, item 10, item 11, item 12, and item 13. And I do want 13 on the consent agenda, but I would like to make some comments.
You sure can.
Okay.
And then planning?
Thomas A. Brown is the applicant for those one and two. And I think everything is good, but there are so many complicating conditions that we do need to hear this. So we will hear items one and two. Item three, Sarah Long, Rick's Moore, VA, Hilltop Plaza, for conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor in District Six.
Consent.
Consent. Item four, Alan Bell and Alan and Karen Bell for conditional use permit for home occupation for retail sales in District Eight. Item five, Fitness Ventures LLC, Chimney Hill Center, Virginia Beach, limited partnership for conditional use permit for indoor recreational facility in District 10.
Consent.
Consent. Item six, Diane D. Hicks for conditional use permit, short-term rental. And Worth, I wasn't sure which items of the short-term rentals you had--
This is District Five, so--
Okay, so that's not District-- Okay, so we're, I'm assuming that it's okay. It was Rosemary's district, is that everybody? Item seven, Jim Lutz and Mel Eaton for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on Pacific Avenue. I don't see a district number here.
Five.
Five, is that five also?
Mm-hmm.
So no one's heard otherwise. All right, eight, James and Lori Jones for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on Baltic Avenue, District Six. This must be the one you were--
Not yet.
Not yet?
Consent.
Okay, consent. All right, item nine, ordinance to amend the city zoning ordinance for Section 106, notice by the Board of Zoning and Fields. That's an amendment. Item 10, ordinance to amend the city zoning ordinance regarding permits for coastal primary sand dune application. That's an amendment to the ordinance. Consent. And item 11, ordinance to amend the city zoning ordinance regarding permits for wetlands applications. Again, this is just an amendment, so on consent.
Okay, I'm standing, I'm sitting here between you and some food, and a little break. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property discussions or consideration acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property with discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, and that would be District Four. Public contract discussions of the ward of public contract involving expenditures of public funds and discussion of the terms, or the scope of such contract where the discussion in open meeting sessions would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategy of the body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29. Project Football, legal matters consultation where legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarded legal matters requiring to provision illegal advice by such, you know, counsel pursuant to Section 2.23711A8, and that's election system, and then legal matters consultation with legal counsel, staff members, or consultant pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultants or briefing in the open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation of litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7, and that's Holloway versus the City of Virginia Beach. And then personnel matters discussion, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, pointies, and employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1. Council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appoint these to have a motion. All right.
Councilor Malucci.
Aye.
Councilor Henley.
Aye.
Councilor Holt.
Aye.
Councilor Roy.
Aye.
Councilor Rockstamman.
Aye.
Councilor Rouse.
Aye.
Councilor Shulden.
Aye.
Councilor Taylor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Sarah Wilson, Ashley, Sandire.
Aye.
Ten.
We--